Thank you. I will call the meeting to order. Clerk, would you please call the roll? Mayor Brown. President. Councilmember Sweet.
Present.
Councilmember Tucson.
Present.
Councilmember. Councilmember McLean. Can everybody please speak into their mics? Thank you. Councilmember King.
Present.
Give a quorum. All right, thank you. And I know Councilmember Simmons will be late.
Okay, I'm just gonna move to excuse.
You can. Want to?
Move to excuse Councilperson Simmons.
Support.
Move to support. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, please rise as you're able for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion for agenda approval.
Some of support.
It's been moved and supported. Any updates or changes?
I would.
Mayor Proton?
I would like to remove everything from the consent agenda. It was going to be a few things, but it's easier to just take everything now.
We'll just have no consent agenda. All right. And then can someone please add ordinance 1438?
I move to add ordinance 1438 to the agenda.
It's a move that's supported. And that will go in as the first ordinance. We'll start with that one. You should all have an RFL on your desk. Any other, there's really nothing else to change. But any other changes? All right, seeing none. All in favor of the amended agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay. This is our first opportunity for public comment. Members of the audience will have three minutes to address council. So what happens is I will start with the list in the back of who signed up, and then I will take hands in the audience. And once we do that, then I'll move to those on Zoom. When I call your name, please approach the podium if you're able, state your name and address for the record. And I have Sigrid Melvin. Yep. No problem. Good evening. Can you move the mic to you?
Okay.
Thank you.
This is a. I don't even have words to describe the situation in our building. Our landlord hasn't repaired our lobby door. Okay. Can I just give per sees out and just give the. Of the mentality of the people that work in the office. Just read the red part about the trash being thrown off the balcony. Now, for the last two weeks now, our entrance to the lobby doesn't close. So it's open 24 hours a day. The reason the office says they cannot find the part. My sons are in the door business, so I'm sure they could find it. It's a door being open. Everybody can walk in. We have all kinds of people coming, going, saying, and some of them want to steal our TV. They want to do that. They do this and that. And we're all people. Most of them in wheelchairs and walkers. We lost a fellow two days ago. We lost another one two weeks ago. It's like living in a funeral home. Everybody's dying. And we need help. Another thing is this group was going to come, well, they came this morning to have, give us support for mental therapy. But the office didn't post any notices that they were coming. So the people don't get help. And it's very desperate over there. That includes me. Also, the building department and the intercom system, which in my case doesn't work. In fact, this is the last phone I bought and it explodes. I never. Don't ask me. Even my hard drive, my computer doesn't work. So we need some technical genius that can come and figure out why it's made exploding. Now, our grass hasn't been watered. When I go to the office, they say, oh, it's not in the budget. The federal government doesn't have a budget for watering the grass at the federal housing.
Thank you, Sigrid. We can catch up like we typically do, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address council?
So please come and help us because the situation is different because people fight and we judge other and all kinds of other stuff. That includes a security guard.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address council? Anyone on Zoom? Anyone on Zoom, raise your hand if you'd like to speak. No one on Zoom. All right, thank you. Seeing none, we will close audience participation. And move to our first ordinance, 1438. Hey, Councilmember Simmons, I'm sorry, that's the one I gave you. But we can, if you want, okay, thank you. If you want to, you can read it or you can hand it over if you want. That's it. It's not on the agenda because we added it. Oh, yeah, that's the one. Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the city of Ypsilanti has applied for several new grants, and those grants have been awarded to the city. And whereas the city of Ypsilanti needs to amend the 2024-25 fiscal year budget appropriation, and now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approved the budget amendment as provided. And I still move.
Support.
The move by Councilmember Simmons, supported by Mayor Proton Wilcox and.
Council, this budget amendment is required. It's a supplemental allocation, but this is a pass through. This is just so we can receive the grant funding. The, from SHIBO for the, the, the survey. Dorsey Estate has an Eagle Grant, and DAM has a, an Eagle Grant and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Grants. And then, so this is just adding these to the budget. They were not included when initially, initially approved. So we're just getting in those so we can be up, be up to date on our payments when they come.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councilmember McLean?
Thank you, Mayor. City manager, just checking, but it looks like there's a fairly minor impact on the general, to the general fund. Two of those.
So this should just be a pass through. Joe, Joe Myers is here if he could, if you have any specific questions, but it looks.
First two of them.
Oh, with, are you, are you speaking of the Eagle Grant from 2024?
No, I'm just asking if there's any impact at all.
Oh, is there any impact? Absolutely not. So the only grant that was, uh, put in the budget was a Eagle Grant from 2024 for $1.5 million. That's still in there, but there's $100,000 extra revenue and expense. All of the rest are revenue neutral because we'll be receiving in the money and then paying them out. Usually it's paying them out and then receiving the money because they're mostly reverse based. But there is no impact to the general fund. They are all money we are getting in to then expend or vice versa.
But it looks like two of them do touch the general fund. Is that accurate?
Two of them touched the general fund, but the revenue will come in and go off.
I understand. Thank you.
We, I don't know how council would like grants, if they would like to have them outside of the general fund because they really don't impact. But historically, when it comes to the Dorsey Estates and the SHIBO grant, grants that aren't specifically tied to a a very specific project, they have been put into the general.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? All right, thank you, Joe. Seeing none. Clerk, would you please call the roll? Oh, wait, City Manager?
Hello, caring.
Oh, wait a minute. See, when it doesn't have the stuff on here, my bad. This is an opportunity for members of the public to ask us any questions. You'll have three minutes. If you have any questions, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. You can approach the podium. Totally forgot. It's okay. Anyone on Zoom wish to speak, please raise your hand. No hands. Someone moved to.
Move to close the public hearing.
It's been moved by Councilmember Sweet, supported by Councilmember Tucson. If there's no further discussion, then Clerk, would you please call the roll? Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember McLean, you have our next ordinance, and I will remember the public hearing.
Can we turn the heat up? It's like really freezing right here.
Or the air down?
Turn the air down. Turn it up.
Resolution 2024-201, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, where the city has an interest in protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And whereas the city has a master plan that reflects the policy goals of the city, including the guiding value that anyone, quote, "anyone, no matter what age or income, can find a place to call home in Ypsilanti," close quote. And whereas the applicant Jenny Lynn Campos Highscope intends to provide public benefits in this development. And whereas the planning commission recommends the city council approve the adaptive reuse plan, planned unit development for the site known as 202, 206, and 218 East Forest, with the property's legal description in the attached ordinance. And now therefore be it resolved that the city, Ypsilanti City Council, adopt ordinance number 1439 entitled Adaptive Reuse, Planned Unit Development, PUD, Highscope Childcare and Community Learning Resource Center, with conditions as recommended in the request for legislation memo on first reading.
And move by Councilmember McLean, supported by Councilmember Tucson. Good evening.
Good evening. Well, um, Highscope is proposing an adaptive reuse PUD at 202, 206, and 218 East Forest. Basically, what an adaptive reuse PUD is, planning unit developments themselves are not permitted in the CNSF zoning district, which is where these properties are located. However, what the zoning ordinance does allow for would be an adaptive reuse PUD. Essentially, an adaptive reuse is taking an existing building and, you know, doing whatever adaptations you need to be able to reoccupy the building with this use. And so the reason why Highscope decided to go this route is because they are proposing a community learning center at the 218 East Forest property, which is, which was presently a church. And it's, yeah, it's going to basically become, upon approval, a community learning resource center. In this zoning district, the only forms of private assembly that are allowed would essentially be religious institutions. And with, you know, overall things changing in the U.S., especially when it comes to religion, we are seeing all over the country, many churches, like church spaces going vacant. And these buildings essentially, you know, just being left to rot. And so this is an opportunity to take a vacant building and see it reactivated with this proposed use. You know, the applicant is, the architect and the applicant are here today. They'll be able to speak upon what they are doing in terms, like overall with the project and what their future goals are with this project. But what I can tell you is that essentially 202 and 206 East Forest, they were special land uses for childcare centers. They are going to remain as childcare centers. And then this 218, the Community Learning Resource Center is going to basically build upon the, the two childcare centers and, you know, provide, I believe they're going to provide meals for people. I believe they're going to be, you know, having trainings for adults, especially in childcare. So it'll provide continuing education, you know, and there's just a lot that, a lot of good that can come. A lot of community benefits that can be, that will be a part of this project. Essentially, the applicant, you know, is significantly in compliance with the PUD standards. They do propose three phases. However, they're right now seeking approval for just phase one. Phase one will be taking the million dollar grant that they got from the state of Michigan to create a community center. And they plan to renovate the existing kitchen, meeting and dining spaces, restroom, classrooms. They want to reconfigure the seating on the main level of the previous sanctuary, improve the landscaping of the site, and restripe this parking lot to make it overall more cohesive than what is currently there. They would also like to replace a wooden ramp and with a concrete ramp to increase and enhance ADA accessibility. They plan to replace exterior lighting with new LED fixtures. And they also want to, you know, stabilize the building and repair the elevator. In future phases, you know, once they decide they are ready to start these phases, they plan to demolish the south wing of the building in order to create space for community vegetable garden. And they will renovate additional classroom spaces. And then with phase three, they plan to add an approximately 2,000 square foot entry slash lobby, which will basically kind of level out, like it'll basically be about the same amount of impervious surface that is currently there after phase three. You know, so, and they also would like to upgrade the parking lot to enhance stormwater management and add additional landscaping. The planning commission overall, they did end up voting for this project four to two, which is an approval, which, you know, they did approve the project. However, the reason why we had the two planning commissioners deny the, deny the PUD is because ultimately, they didn't agree with the extra conditions that one of the planning commissioners added to that, that PUD. And that included like lot combination, that included bringing down the color temperature of the lighting and then also increasing the caliber of the street trees that are being proposed to be planted. So, yeah, basically, since the planning commission has given me their overall, like since they got their overall approval, the applicant has since addressed many of the conditions that were included initially. And they, I'm putting it down to the number of conditions they had now. Yeah, they essentially brought it down to eight conditions, which basically include making sure that they obtain DPS approval for any right of work, right of way work, ensuring that they obtain official approval from the fire department. Make sure that they obtain any HDC approval for any exterior work that's being proposed. It also, one of us also making, you know, staff can perform, staff can perform, sorry, staff can approve a performance guarantee to ensure that the proposed work is completed. And then the applicant will address any landscape, any discrepancies in the landscape plan. And also make sure that the landscape is maintained in good faith. And then the final condition is one of the conditions that I wanted to ensure the planning commission included, which was that council has the ability to review the PUD agreement once it has been approved by the city attorney. You know, similar to what we did in our last PUD with, with the J297 project, so, yeah.
Thank you. Council, would you like to hear from the applicant before we open up for questions? Is that okay? Applicant, want to come and tell us about your plans for the project? Good evening.
Seth Pinchansky with Daniels Zermac Architects.
Hi, I'm Kamiya Single. I'm with Highscope.
So should I assume that everybody knows what Highscope does?
I hope so.
Okay. So about probably, I think, 2017, Highscope purchased the church there. And with the idea of really being able to utilize it, they were previously renting parking from the church, but wanted to be able to utilize it to give back to the community in some way. They've always had a very small lab preschool onsite. And the main purpose for that is so that they can educate educators on the best practices for preschool education, early, early, early age education. I'm not saying that correctly. So then COVID hit, and some of those plans did not make sense at that point. Since then, coming out of COVID, Highscope has teamed with Gretchen's House, I think you're probably aware of that, to revitalize the other two houses that are in part of this PUD for two different age groups of early childhood education. And kind of extending that lab school to a greater level than they had in the past. And so then they applied for this grant at the state. Didn't quite get as much as they wanted, but they got a million dollars to do, at least that's why we're really only pursuing phase one or only have the funds to pursue phase one and the master plan of this building. And really create this kind of learning resource center, not just a community center, but a center that focuses on learning for adults, mixed age groups, and can be everything. I think Josh said, great introduction. You know, said a lot of it right there, but also to team with some other organizations in the community to be able to really just have space that lots of people in the community can come together and provide services or education. Kind of almost in the same way that we're seeing libraries being used for bringing people who have expertise in the community to be able to share spaces, to be able to share with the rest of the community. So that's the big picture. Unfortunately, you know, with a million dollars, it doesn't go that far these days. So we're probably spending about $100,000 on the exterior of the building, the site, et cetera. But trying to conserve as much money as we can to renovate the interior, be able to have a commercial kitchen. And really, it's, it's a big building, so this is focusing really on two floors. The educational wing is kind of heavy renovation, be able to bring restrooms up to meet ADA, make sure accessibility, fire, you know. It's a big building. It's actually separate buildings from a fire code standpoint, so safety is one of our largest concerns. We, the building has to be divided up correctly. The minor work in the sanctuary, as Josh mentioned, just to make that space more flexible for larger meetings. But aesthetically, the building pretty much staying as is for this phase. And the, the smaller building on the south end that Josh mentioned, phase two is demolishing. That building has lead and in it, and it's not, it's a wood frame structure. It's kind of, it, it needs to be torn off. I think the fire marshal would agree. So as soon as we get funding for that phase, that'll, that'll commence. That was what that second phase was. And third phase really hasn't been identified yet, other than this kind of roughly about the equivalent square footage of the building to be demolished in new kind of entry lobby kind of space. And that would go with renovating more of the building. What am I forgetting? Or what could you add? Yeah, that's kind of it in a nutshell.
What we're going to do now is I'm going to move to open the public hearing and ask if the public has any comments for us, and then we may have questions for you. So feel free to stick close. All right, so the public hearing on this is now open. If any member of the audience would like to address council on this particular topic, please raise your hand. Anyone, anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand. Seeing none.
I move to close the public hearing.
It's a move by Councilmember McLean, supported by Councilmember Tucson, all in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, council. Woo-hoo. Questions and comments? I'll start by saying a few years ago, I toured this space. And I know that, I want to say it was the, is it the executive director? Is it your president? I'm not sure the title. The president gave us, gave us a tour and talked about wanting to use the space as a community hub, right? To be able to allow other organizations to come in. We heard about the lead. We got to go through the sanctuary, and it's a very, very large space with those classrooms. It was really actually important to me to see that happen because we don't have many spaces on, especially on that side of the city where people can come and gather. And so I'm really glad that it has come back to this so that it can be used as a communal space for everyone. I don't have any questions at the moment. Questions from council? Councilmember Simmons?
Hello, good evening. So I have just a couple of quick questions, I think. One, so for this space, do you expect that it'll be free for users?
Yes, in fact, that's part of the grant, I believe, is that it has to be, there may be reimbursement for cleaning charge or something like that, if it was an event that was put on. But it has to be free, I think, for.
And then, um, what, well, this is, you were saying that, you know, unclear about the future phases, obviously, that need to get funding. Do you all have an idea of when you hope for those to be following on? Or what those plans might look like?
I know ideally, if we got the funding, it would be probably the next five years. We've been wanting to do this for a while, but really it does depend on the funding and what we're able to get grants and stuff for it.
Yeah, great. And then I saw in the information that there, I think this is in phase two, this hope to kind of, once the building's removed, to try to create some green space back there, and then some potential garden space and things like that, which I think is great. And people have talked a lot about just like access to food. So I love the grow and take, and especially having access at, you know, different times. I just wanted to ask whether you all have also considered composting at the site, both for the carbon footprint, but also as a learning tool, and then also for onsite use in the garden.
I don't think that's going to be a problem because, like, a little ways down the actual office for Highscope, we do composting there. Like, our staff has taken on the initiative to do composting. So I'm sure they'll be happy to introduce that towards the learning center as well.
The thing, this becomes kind of a learning opportunity for the kids who are in the program. So they have currently some playground space behind them. This kind of all started seven years ago, I guess, when we did a master plan for the whole Highscope campus. And the idea of adding more green space, larger play space for the kids, et cetera, actually kind of relocating some of the parking on the site, et cetera. So it's kind of, that kind of got things rolling and started. One thing I also didn't mention, I think, was part of the, the application for the grant, I don't know if you read it, was solar panels on the roof. We're hoping to actually do geothermal as well. I don't know if you all are aware of this, but with the Inflation Reduction Act, geothermal has a 40% direct federal payment for nonprofits and government organizations. We use it for libraries a lot. So that really makes geothermal actually cheaper than any other mechanical system.
How much did you say the percent was?
Well, it's 30 to 50%, depending on, most geothermal is US-made, so that gets you to 40%. And if it's in an energy community, which I'm not sure if Ypsilanti is, it can be 50%. So it's, it's a really great thing to take advantage.
Is that the, we say, is that kind of in line with the Justice 40 designations when you're saying the?
It was Inflation Reduction Act, and this particular section for government agencies and nonprofits is called Section 48. And I can get you more information about it if you'd like.
Yeah. And thanks for that. That's really interesting to, to know. And then the last question, I noticed. And then the last question, I noticed when I was kind of talking about the different kinds of things that might happen within the space. I most, I understood that all of what that, those parts were, except for one part, which is just the, it said, police community outreach site. And I just wanted to know what that means.
The, that was in the original grant application. And so I think only Gentlin Campos, who's not here, would be able to answer exactly what the. Conversations were behind that, but I assume that, that have been some. Sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember McLean.
Thank you, Mayor. If I heard correctly, you've got maybe some changes to your parking surfaces in phases one and three, is that accurate?
Yeah, so what we're doing in this first phase is just trying to bring it, kind of soften it a little bit. Make it a little more efficient and safer. So we're adding some landscaping islands, adding a little bit of green space. And just restriping it so that basically by even reducing that amount of impervious area. We're still keeping the same number of parking spaces. The, the lot is not in great shape. And so, you know, that, it's easy to say phase one, phase two, phase three. But the reality is, you know, if funding came along for fifty thousand dollars to resurface that lot next year. We'd go ahead and do that as a maintenance item, you know? So that's unfortunately, I don't think in our budget for this one million. But I don't know if that answers your question.
It does, it helps. What I'm really interested in is the impervious services and whether or not any development project has a net gain or loss of those surfaces.
So in this case, we're.
Think what I'm hearing is that this is very positive in terms of less.
Yeah, I wish I could say it's what percentage it is, but it's probably about fifteen percent reduction in previous area. And then when we tear down this back building, that'll be a significant. But hopefully, when we actually redo the parking lot in the future phase, and hopefully it'll be phase two. It'll, we'll be able to implement some better stormwater management. I think right now it's, you know, it's a nineteen fifties parking lot.
I understand that and I appreciate your sensitivity to the issue.
Thank you. Further questions from counsel?
I just have comments, well, I do have a couple of questions too, though. I appreciate that this building is getting. Appreciate that this building is getting reused, so that, that's awesome. I think all of the environmental issues that you've addressed in terms of the solar, the impervious surfaces. Getting rid of the lead, those are, those are all wonderful. Sitting through this with the planning commission. I wonder if you could address, there was a lengthy discussion there about combining of the lots and the reason for that. And I understand that to be that in order for this to work with the P U D. And have the, the other impervious services from the other two. Lots contribute to the overall, then you would have to do the combination of those. And then there was discussion about if one of those was sold, what the process was for uncombining them. So if you could just speak to that for a moment.
Yeah, I think, actually, I think we were fine from an impervious area standpoint. It, and, and probably in the end, we're, we're fine from a landscaping standpoint either. But the idea initially was, let's present this as it's a bigger space. And these are, you know, Highscope's mission really of being a educational research foundation. Does that in a lot of the other houses they own on, on that property. And at one time, we even considered, should we just combine everything? And that would have really tied our hands. But then, you know, these three particular parcels stand out outside of that mission. As the, the educational component. So it kind of made sense that those be the three parcels. But it, so I think it was kind of like a combination of kind of looking at it from a more of a macro level. Of what's the whole green space and all these existing nice trees that are here? To offset that green, that impervious area. But also just what kind of makes sense from a logistical standpoint of doing something special. That doesn't really fit into the zoning. Where we could definitely see some of these other houses that are being used for research right now. Researchers, you know, being turned back into residential at some point in the future. Because the reality is this church is large enough that some of those researchers could get moved into the church in future phases. Which would then turn some more property over to residential, which would be nice in that neighborhood.
I recognize that the middle property has been extensively added on to, so less likely for that. But the smaller house up front.
Right, not, not the, any of these three houses, or these two houses and the church. I'm saying there's a total of nine parcels that Highscope owns. So there's another six parcels. Some are houses that are currently rented, some are houses that have office space in them. So it's those ones that have office space in them that, that could be eventually turned back over to residential.
The only other question I have was in, in the P U D, it mentions a police department public works program several times. And I'm not aware of what that program is and.
Basically, the thought process behind that is if the police department wants to organize an event or they need a space to organize something. We would be happy to let them utilize the community center to do that for whatever reason.
Okay, somehow when I read it, it sounded like there was, there was like police officers coming over to volunteer and, and work. And I was like, I had never heard of that.
If that's gonna happen, then that's fine too, but that was, that.
All right, all right. Thank you for that. There, there's a mention of a, of an addition in here. And where is that located on the building? An addition to the building, so I was aware that the back part would be taken off.
So the, on the south end of the building, there's a kind of a wing. Down, that's the wood frame wing that kind of, if you've ever been toured in the building, I don't know if you've ever, anybody's toured back in that space recently. But it's almost like a gymnasium, wood floor gymnasium. With a dungeon underneath. And it's a little scary, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend touring it. But that's what would be removed, demolished in the second phase. The addition in phase three, right? For some reason, I did not bring the right drawing, I brought two of the landscape drawing. But was on, it's not showing up in this drawing, but it was kind of filling in a little larger entry area. Right now, there, there's kind of on an angle. That was the current entry lobby for the church that had access to an elevator. But it would be expanding that significantly to create more of a gathering space. Kind of lobby space, if you will.
Thank you.
Are there questions or comments from counsel? Thank you, seeing none, Clark, would you all please call the roll?
Councilmember McLean. Councilmember King. Mayor Protem Wilcoxen. Mayor Brown. Member Sweet. Councilmember Tucson. Councilmember Simmons. Motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations, thank you. Councilmember Tucson, you have our next ordinance. Twenty twenty-four dash two zero three?
My apologies, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash two oh three, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas the city of Ypsilanti recognizes that the city has an interest in protecting the economic diversity image of the community. And whereas the city of Ypsilanti recognizes that the city has an interest in updating regulations to address changes in technology. And whereas the city of Ypsilanti recognized that electronic message boards, board signs allow for easy and clear communication among residents and businesses. And whereas the city of Ypsilanti recognized the importance of regulations that ensure electronic message board signs. Are compatible with neighboring uses and unobstructive to traffic. And now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approved the zoning text amendment provision. And the zoning ordinance to permit electronic message board signs. In dash SF and CN dash Mids, CN Center, HC, DC. And NC zoning districts with corresponding regulations to protect neighboring properties and traffic from visual distractions and or glare. And I so move.
The move by Councilmember Tucson, supported by Councilmember King, hello again, Josh.
So over the last couple of months, the planning commission has, you know, reviewed this ordinance. And, you know, listened to what counsel had to say. We also had a member of the first Baptist, a second Baptist church, you know. In communication with the planning commission and myself, you know, really discussing. The implications of what it would, you know, be, what, what it would mean to have, you know, eight square foot E M Bs. In the core neighborhood zoning district. You know, with the addition of a new planning commissioner, Michelle Marin. She ended up sharing the Michigan sign guidelines with the planning commission. And so we all got to, you know, to really go over that and a review, like what are the recommendations for E M Bs? But also just signage in general. The planning commission ultimately ended up deciding to take freestanding permanent signs and increase them. From sixteen square feet to thirty-six square feet, which means that anybody who wants to have an E M B in that zoning district. Could have half of a thirty, like half of that, so that would be, sorry, I'm really bad at math, eighteen? Yeah, so they could have an eighteen square foot E M B. Additionally, the other change that we saw is that we specified that in the center zoning district. That E M Bs are building mounted only, just because we do not allow for freestanding permanent signs in the center district. Other than that, the fifty percent rule has remained the same. Planning commission has decided to keep the monochrome text requirement. And they ultimately kept the same maximum number, no more than one electronic messaging board on each lot of land or each lot. Same thing with the messages cannot change more than every two minutes. And if there's a malfunction, ultimately, the sign will have to be programmed to turn off. And then it also has, E M Bs can be, cannot be illuminated between nine PM and six AM, so.
Well, thank you. Are you okay if we move to open the public hearing before we ask questions to Josh? If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address counsel on this topic of electronic message board signs, please raise your hand. Anybody on Zoom?
Anyone who'd like to speak on Zoom, raise your hand, please.
Councilmember Tucson, can you please?
Yes, I moved to close the public hearing.
Been moved and supported, all in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye. All right, welcome back. Questions or comments from counsel? Councilmember Sweet.
How did we settle on the six AM time? That one feels like really early, especially in the winter, when we're having like two hours of darkness until, you know, it doesn't get light until eight AM, nine AM. Six AM just feels really early for a bright illuminated sign.
So when the planning commission was reviewing the E M B ordinance overall, they were looking at what do other communities have? It was a general practice for other communities to have E M Bs not being active between the hours of nine and, nine PM and six AM.
Councilmember McLean.
What's the rationale for the signs not changing, I think you said, more often than every two minutes?
Yeah, the rationale was that we did not, we were concerned about distracting drivers. Ultimately, I don't remember also what the Michigan design, like sign standards say, but I, I believe it was also like. I believe it also said once every two minutes is like the recommended amount of time that something, a message can change.
Thank you.
So that precludes any like fireworks displays on the sign, right?
Yeah, basically, it's, it has to be monochrome text only. And there were questions about the legality of that. The planning commission ultimately decided that they were not concerned about that restricting free speech. Especially because we have seen other communities like Pittsfield Township, they have the exact same monochrome text requirements that we are proposing here. And as far as I'm aware, it hasn't been challenged, so.
This was fun to, to listen to the discussion here than have planning commission go back and say, what is their question? But through that conversation, I understood it a whole lot better the second time through the planning commission. So that was helpful for me at least, so thank you for that, taking that out. I think the planning commission went over this in, in great detail. And Commissioner Marin's contribution to that was, was substantial, so I want to thank her publicly for that.
In regard to the monochrome, the recent Supreme, it's not so recent anymore, but the Supreme Court has opined that. Municipalities cannot regulate the content of the signs. So you've got a little bit of a gray, excuse the pun, area there.
Thank you. Further questions or comments from counsel? Well, thanks, Josh. Clark, would you all please call the roll?
Mayor Protem Wilcoxen. Mayor Brown. Councilmember Sweet. Councilmember Tucson. Councilmember Simmons. Councilmember McLean. Councilmember King. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, so Councilmember Sweet, you have a bunch of resolutions, so, you know, just start from the top.
Resolution number, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash two zero six, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. That the minutes of the September third, twenty twenty-four city council meetings be approved.
Moved by Councilmember Sweet, supported by Councilmember Tucson. Any questions or comments from counsel? Councilmember Simmons?
One thing I noticed is just in the minutes, so when there was the, I think it was consent agenda. Steve or Councilmember Mayor Protem Wilcoxen. Oh my gosh, okay, voted no, but then, and so it was noted at the top. But then for all the things underneath, it was voted, it shows him as a yes vote. And so I would guess that, that those should all have him listed as a no under.
Each of those resolutions should be a no.
Sorry, because he voted no on the consent agenda? See what you're saying, thank you, I'll correct it.
Thank you for catching that, anything else? All right, seeing none, I'll wait for you to write your note and then please call the roll.
Councilmember Sweet. Mayor Brown. Councilmember Simmons. Councilmember McLean. Councilmember King. Mayor Protem Wilcoxen. Councilmember Tucson. Motion carries.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash two zero eight, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas the municipal employees retirement system of Michigan covers all full-time city employees excluding fire and police pension system members. And whereas the municipal employees retirement system is holding its annual meeting October tenth and eleventh in Grand Rapids, Michigan. And whereas the municipal employees retirement system allows one employee delegate to be appointed by a governing body to attend the conference. And whereas this governing body has appointed Tom Kosch as delegate and Alonso Weaver as alternate. Therefore, be it resolved that this employee be appointed as an employee delegate, and I so move.
And move by Councilmember Sweet, supported by Mayor Protem Wilcoxen.
And this is done yearly, there's a requirement that one set be directors. And then the other set be rank and file employees, and this is the rank and file.
Any questions or comments from counsel? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Tucson. Councilmember Simmons. Councilmember McLean. Councilmember King. Mayor Protem Wilcoxen. Mayor Brown. Councilmember Sweet.
Mr. Burr.
I noticed that there's a resolution twenty, twenty twenty-four two oh seven.
That was taken off of.
Just taken off the consent.
But it's a discussion. As a discussion. That's what I thought. Am I wrong?
It's, it is a resolution currently. There would need to be a motion to postpone till the date certain if that's what council chooses to.
Oh, so it wasn't in the, the packet, it was removed. So I thought we had, okay. All right. So I'm sorry. I thought I put it in.
The whole point of me taking things out of consent.
I knew why, but it was our, when I got them, they were already removed. So I thought that this was already discussed. Okay. Um, so we probably should go back to that one. Uh, do you have it, right? Yes. Yeah, let's just do it. Council member McLean, you'll come back.
Thank you, mayor. Resolution number two oh two four dash two oh seven resolved by the city, uh, the council of Ypsilanti. Whereas the government finance officers association says is essential that governments maintain adequate levels of fund balance to mitigate current and future risks and to ensure stable tax rates. And whereas the GFOA recommends at a minimum that general purpose governments, uh, regardless of size, maintain unrestricted budgetary fund balanced in their general fund of no less than two months of regular general fund operating revenues or regular general fund operating expenditures. And whereas the city of Ypsilanti currently has two million dollars in its budget stabilization fund, which represents approximately thirty-two days worth of expenditures. And whereas the city of Ypsilanti is expected to finish the fiscal year ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four with a surplus in excess of one million dollars. And whereas the city of Ypsilanti already has thirteen point three million in its general fund balance prior to the close of the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, eight point one million of which is unassigned. And whereas the city of Ypsilanti continues to project deficits in the current fiscal year and beyond. And whereas a transfer of one point two million from the general fund to the budget stabilization fund would bring Ypsilanti's ESF to three point two million or approximately fifty-one days worth of expenditures. And this transfer would represent significant movement forward. Now therefore be resolved that finance director be directed to transfer one point two million into the city's budget stabilization fund. I so move.
Support.
Been moved by council member McLean, supported by council member Tucson and Mayor Proton.
Okay. So, thank you, mayor. So just for, for clarity, my, my hope is that we would have this discussion this evening. Um, take questions and, uh, see where, where folks are. Uh, but I think it is, first of all, this is the time of year, uh, as we wrap up a fiscal year, uh, and find out where we, where we stand for that prior year. Uh, this is the time where we look at our budget stabilization fund, uh, and make some, make some, have some discussions, uh, make some plans for whether or not we want to do, uh, additional, uh, transfers into that fund. And, but I also think that, uh, the time to actually have a vote on something like this is after the full council has been briefed um, on the budget and on the, the end of year balance. Uh, we did have a finance committee meeting, uh, a few weeks ago. Uh, there were some preliminary numbers, but those were not, those were not final. So we're getting closer to having those final numbers. I believe city manager that will have that, uh, in our first meeting in October.
Uh, that'll be the second meeting in October. The first presentation will be at the, um, October tenth finance committee, and then council will hear that as a whole during the fifteenth. Uh, however, staff would be happy to share the presentation with council as soon as it's prepared. It would just be presented during those days.
I think that would, that would be great to have that kind of information to everybody beforehand. I think that makes the the discussions at the council meeting and the finance committee meeting, uh, more productive. Um, but just to, to talk about, I mean, but, but one may ask, well, where do we come up with one point two million? Uh, those are, I think this is in the ballpark of where we think the, uh, the surplus, uh, will end up for the year. And, uh, there's a couple of questions that we really should be also addressing as a council. Uh, namely, where do we want this, uh, to land? Talked about the, in the, in this resolution, there is reference to the, the GFOA, the government finance officers association, saying that it should be at least two months worth of revenues or expenditures. Uh, but there are circumstances under which, uh, it could be more than that, uh, and even should be more than that. Um, so we should have a conversation about where we think this ultimately should land. Uh, I'm going to suggest that it should be, uh, more in the three month area, uh, but I think it's a good discussion to have. And so, uh, we also should talk about how much, uh, we would transfer each year. Uh, finally, we should have some discussion about what are the circumstances under which, uh, we would want to remove money from the rainy day fund. That's, you know, there's a general sense, I think, that when you create a rainy day fund, it's, it's for a rainy day. Uh, but what does that look like? What does that mean? Uh, often it means a certain level of reduction in, uh, revenues, for example. So we might, we might define that better. So those are all parts of a good conversation, uh, that we should have. Wanted to just bring this forward to get us thinking about these things. We'll have the, the full discussion about the finance. With finance committee and the, and the full council, uh, about the final year end budget. Uh, and then my hope would be that we can, uh, have this third, uh, at that time or after that.
Thank you. All right. Questions, comments? Mayor Proton?
Um, as far as the, uh, the presentation, I would, I would really appreciate that. I will be, uh, out of town for the October fifteenth meeting. So if we could get that before that, I would be out of town from the fifth through the nineteenth. And so we have it before that. Um, that would be great. Um, I think these are all great points. Uh, you know, I had always thought of three months, uh, operating budget as a, as a target for, um, for this kind of fun. Um, fifty-one days at, at what we got, uh, with this addition, um, is short of two months. So, uh, I'd kind of like to see that get up to, uh, at least the two month mark, but, uh, that would depend on, you know, when we could add that, that additional funding. Um, I'm really interested in the conversation about triggers for, for releases funds. I know, uh, council member Simmons is, is voiced, uh, concerns about that, you know, uh, in the past as well. So, um, you know, it's not clear to me what that would look like. You know, where do we have to be in order for us to, to tap into that? And what would be the conditions and what would be the, the rules for doing it? And, um, you know, would there be, uh, stipulations that only a certain amount of reserves could be released at a time? Um, would there be a timeline for, for further release? Uh, and what would be the conditions for doing that? Would that be, uh, a general amount in the general fund that we dipped below? Um, or would there be other circumstances, uh, attached to that?
Thank you. Council member McLean.
If I could, one thing I might like to do with the, with the ascent of the, the full council is simply ask for a couple of technical amendments. This is the way this is written. Um, I don't know if others have it in front of them, but, uh, there's a provision that says whereas the city of Ypsilanti already has thirteen point three dollars in its general fund balance. Um, it should be thirteen point three million. The eight point one million, which is unassigned, it says eight point one dollars. It should be eight point one million. And the final whereas clause, uh, and the last word in that says this transfer would represent significant movement toward, it should be forward.
Oh. Those are amendments.
So it, they're simply technical amendments, yeah, clarifying. I don't want to confuse the issue. If anybody's got objections to that, I don't want to move it forward. But if you're okay, they're technical amendments. I would move those.
Be friendly. It's just adding the words that are missing. You, you good, council member Tucson? All right. Mayor Proton, you okay with that? Cause I did say both of you.
Yeah, that was fine.
Great. All right. It's been amended. Um, are there comments or questions at this time on this resolution?
I, I guess I do have a question in terms of the timing of, uh, so we need a motion to propose postpone this. Do we have to set a specific date or we set it relative to the release of the report? And is the point to have this come back, the meeting after the report is released and discussed or at the same time?
Imagine, were you gonna say something?
I was, uh, just going to mention that I would, I would recommend somewhat what, uh, council member McLean says to have this come back, uh, for the fifteenth. Uh, have the presentation, it will, as I said previously, as soon as it's prepared, I will forward it to council. So they have ample opportunity to, to have, uh, some eyes on this prior to the meeting. And then after the presentation, go through some discussion depending on what city council determines. I would, uh, recommend creating an ordinance on how to govern the rainy day fund rather than just a resolution, just gets more teeth behind it. So I would recommend if council chooses pass this resolution and then we'll notice to, um, create an ordinance, um, and then move forward from there.
Thank you. Council member Simmons?
Yeah. So I was, I was about to make this motion, but I, I just, I think that given what Andrew's talking about, I almost feel like this is still a two-part process where the, that we can talk about the pieces have this, this actual discussion about some of the things that have come up and what city manager Halinga mentioning during that October fifteenth one, and then to actually consider this then for November, our November twelfth meeting. I, I guess I would make a motion to postpone this resolution until, um, our November twelfth council meeting.
Support. No, there's not currently one on. Was it moved and supported? All right, discussion. Wait, can we discuss on this one? Yes, we can. Uh, council member McLean.
Seeking clarity, I think from the maker of the motion, uh, regard to why we wouldn't do it at the October fifteenth meeting.
Because if we're looking to have an ordinance that is, will determine how to govern the fund, I think we could, we should have a specific conversation about that so that that can then be prepared and come forward to council. And I don't think that's going to happen all at one time. If we're supposed to be hearing the, the presentation on October fifteenth. So what I'm suggesting is that we have the, a conversation then about how we would want to govern it. So then that could be pulled together for our November twelfth meeting.
So, um, Mr. Burr, yeah.
An ordinance requires, uh, publication and two readings. So is it the motion that would be the first reading or second reading?
I, the motion would be that then, so then the first meeting would fall on November twelfth. Yes. Yes. Yes.
That's not what the.
So, yeah, the, that would just be specific to the ordinance. This would be a resolution. Do you want to, do you want to postpone this specific resolution and transferring these funds to the rainy day fund?
Yeah, I think it makes sense for those to be together. Uh, I guess I, we already moved money. So we already have money in the rainy day fund. I didn't think that those two things need to happen together. If we're making the decision to save the money and then coming up with the process, what we do with it or how we use it, that could take longer, but I, I would support moving the money sooner than later. So we don't end up not moving it. Honestly. Council member McLean?
Mayor, yeah, I, I would agree with you. And so I, I think giving us the time to have the full conversation about the ordinance, we can do that over the course of November, uh, at the two. I think we've got two meetings scheduled that month. I think that makes, makes good sense. So I would oppose the, oppose the motion on the floor.
Mayor Proton?
This seems like these are two separate conversations and there's nothing saying that the ordinance couldn't be a proposed on October first.
Right.
So that's a separate thing. Um, and then that would be the discussion could happen at the October first meeting and, and could be either read at that meeting or read at the fifteenth.
Yeah, I, that I would definitely like to be, um, involved in that conversation and I will not be present for October first. So the motion on the floor right now is to postpone this resolution until November twelfth. So actually we're not even talking about the ordinance. Um, it's for this resolution. So further discussion on this motion.
All right. Seeing none, Claude, would you please call the roll?
This is to postpone resolution two oh seven until November twelfth. Mayor Proton Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
No.
Council member Sweet.
No.
Council member Tucson.
No.
Council member Simmons.
Yes.
Council member McLean.
No.
Council member King.
Yes.
Motion failed.
Thank you. All right. The original resolution is on the floor. Council member McLean.
I would move to consider this, uh, on, at our October fifteenth meeting.
Support.
I mean, postponed to the fifteenth. Thank you, Mr. Burr. Support.
All right. It's been moved by council member McLean, supported by council member Tucson. Discussion. Council member Simmons?
I guess I just, I'm trying to understand um, why I guess I'm just trying to understand like really the difference in the timing, um, in the time between having presentation and discussion about what, what we see in that presentation and then also moving money. I think the concern about whether we actually pick this up or not by one meeting. I'm, I'm not sure I understand that. Like I don't under, so I'm just trying to understand why we can't give like some time for consideration in these different things. So we can get information, understand it, talk about it, and then have action that's not directly right at, on top of it. I'm just, I don't understand why there's the sense that we need to kind of stack them in that way when we can give ourselves like ample time.
Thank you, mayor and council member Simmons. Uh, I'm, I'll answer for myself. Others may feel the same way, but for me, if we link the two, the, the the idea of an ordinance that city manager talked about along with this resolution and the movement of money. If those two somehow becomes our understanding that those two are linked and we do those through, uh, the meetings in November, and if there's any delay, we find ourselves into December, into the holidays, and we wind up not taking care of this. And the next thing you know, it's January and that's.
So we can just not link them. I just was under the, I was mistaken that it would kind of be a replacement. So it's fine for them to not be linked. Um, but I don't know that the timeframe necessarily links them. The, if the concern about the ordinance can be longer because whatever, then that can be pushed. It doesn't necessarily have to happen in that first meeting, um, in November. So, so Bart, like taking out the idea of them being linked, what then is still the, the reason for them not to be able to come forward in our first meeting in November?
Thank you, mayor. I simply, I think it's a bad idea to delay things if we, if we don't have to. Uh, and I think, uh, I'm happy to, uh, the ordinance, which I think is going to be a longer discussion. I'm happy to make sure, or I would certainly support putting it on agendas that are going to be when you can be here. I think that's, that's the longer conversation.
I think that, that's my concern. Um, I would say in my experience, when we kick the can on things, sometimes they don't come back quickly. They don't happen, um, because other issues arise and, um, the stabilization fund, uh, to me is very important. And if we have it and we know it's there and we've already squirreled away some money, I say let's move it sooner than later and then discuss what we do with it, um, at length or take as much time as we need. But I'd rather us move that money away so that it's not, we're not looking at it as money to expend on other things and focus on the fact that for me individually, I would like to see that as the stabilization. and focus on the fact that for me individually, I would like to see that as the stabilization funds, the rainy day fund, and not incorporate it into other discussions because that has happened and could happen.
Effort him.
Separating these two things out and having the money transferred on the fifteenth, I have no issues with that. I, I think the amount that's been stated is, is reasonable. And they've already stated that I'd like to see more being transferred in there, but that timeline would have to be determined. Question comes up then is like, you know, I can, I can appreciate that some people would like to figure out what the conditions are for getting it out prior to putting it in. I mean, that's, that's, you don't just buy a CD without understanding what the penalties are for, for taking it out, right? So kind of a weird analogy, but you know, that, I can appreciate people who don't understand that. You know, I, I am fine with figuring that out afterwards. Because we all have to deliberate on it, so that's, that's a thing. You know, I would like to be present for those, those conversations about the, the trigger mechanism. And if I can't do that on the fifteenth, I'd rather have that be at some other time.
And so again, currently this is about postponing this resolution, not the trigger mechanisms.
Sure.
Um, yeah, just, I just want to make it clear because we've been conflict, putting the two things together.
That's why I'm.
Further discussion, questions? All right, so would you all please call the roll on postponing the resolution to the fifteen?
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
No.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilcox?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, so this has been postponed. Okay, Councilmember Sweet, it's back to you again.
Resolution number twenty twenty four dash two oh nine resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas the Municipal Employees Retirement System of Michigan covers all full-time city employees excluding fire and police pension system members. And whereas the Municipal Employees Retirement System is holding its annual meeting October tenth and eleventh, twenty twenty four in Grand Rapids, Michigan. And whereas the Municipal Employees Retirement System allows one officer delegate to be appointed by a governing body to attend the conference. And whereas this governing body has appointed Tracy Woodrow, City Clerk, as an officer delegate, and Bonnie Westler, Director of the Department of Public Services, as alternate. Therefore, be it resolved that this employee be appointed as an officer delegate, and I so move.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Sweet, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Wilcox. This is the same as what you told us.
Correct, yes, this is the, the officer delegates for the, the MERS.
All right, any questions or comments on our delegate?
Talk to me into it.
Ah, you got swindled, all right.
You got voluntold?
Voluntold, right, okay. Seeing none, would you all please call the roll?
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Wilcox, and you have our next resolution.
Resolution number twenty twenty four dash two one zero, Resolution to Approve One-Year Contract with Governmental Consulting Services, Inc. It is resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that a contract with Governmental Counsel Consulting Services, Inc., GSCI, GCSI, and I, I thought that looks right.
Yeah.
Be extended for one year from October first to twenty twenty four to September thirtieth, twenty twenty five, on the terms set forth in the attached contract for consideration of three thousand dollars per month retainer. And before I make this motion, there was no contract in the packet. You know, there's a, there's a summary.
Right, there's a summary.
A report, but there was no contract in, in this packet.
And then the RFO, yeah.
So with that, I, I so move.
But we did a guy, a part. It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Wilcox and supported by Councilmember King. Yes, that is true. It's not in here.
And I meant to bring that to your attention previously, but then I get that email out of my project.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's, it's exactly the same stipulations of the, the previous contract. So it's a year at three thousand dollars.
And then there were the, the expectations about reporting information, presentation. Can you forward it to us, please?
Yep.
Thank you. Well, good evening. Yeah, yeah, please do.
Well, good evening, council members. It's a pleasure to be here today. I know that a year ago, I had opportunity to first address this council and talk to you about getting our contract renewed. After a discussion with you, I was thankful that you offered our contract with some of the expectations that I would be a, a better fit for you than the last person that ran our account and that there would be some expectations upon me to engage with the legislature and be able to bring home some dollars and things of that nature to the city of Ypsilanti. So it's been about a year I've taken over. And as you all know, I have been engaged on several different issues involving the city of Ypsilanti. And one of the issues was Cross Street Bridge, which we all know was in disrepair. I was helpful in attending meetings with Bonnie Westler and going and get money to help with obtaining money for the bridge, which was, I think it was around, I know I got about one point five million dollars. It was about half the money that was needed. And then we pursued dollars to get money for grants through the reg, regular appropriation process. Also, I know that I assisted with the Peninsular Paper Dam Project in helping with Eagle to secure the three point seven million in twenty twenty three, as well as additional dollars to help with that dam mitigation project to get that reduction taken care of, as well as attending the Water Street meetings and grant front, grant funding meetings for Water Street mitigation. So also, last year in this, well, during this budget year, we did pursue dollars for the city for infrastructure and GCSI was successful in obtaining up to three million dollars for money for you, for you all to use for your infrastructure. And that's money that you can use toward Frog Island, toward other infrastructure projects that you have here in the city as well. So on behalf of the GCSI, I'd like to say it's been a pleasure working with you. I'm constantly engaged with the city manager. I know that the mayor, I've had you out to speak with legislators regularly. I've had brought regulator, I've bought, I've brought legislators into the district to talk to you all, let's talk to the mayor and whatnot about needs for the city of Ypsilanti. And honestly, I, I, I enjoy it and I look forward to continue work with you all. And with that being said, I hope that you see the work that I've done. I said I would come back and, you know, I hated the fact that people would, you wouldn't see, see a person from my company for a year and then we come back wanting to renew the contract. But I've been here, I've been fully engaged, and I hope to be engaged again for the next year and work on your priorities for the next fiscal year. So if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them at this time and, and go from there.
Thank you so much. I'll open it for comments or questions from council. Councilmember Simmons?
Uh, hello, hi.
Hello.
So I have a couple of questions. Well, one of my questions is just trying to understand when, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm still trying, I think, understand what it means when GCSI kind of says, oh, like we helped to do this, I think. Of course, something like this three million dollars, everybody's about to claim it. You know, we got our state senator claiming it, our state rep claiming it, and now you're claiming it.
Yeah.
Everybody's claiming it. I don't know, are we claiming it here too? We can claim it?
I'm claiming it.
Because, I'm definitely claiming it. So, so I'm just, so I'm just, I'm just, I, I, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to get a sense of what that means because a lot of times when it's kind of like, okay, yeah, we're, we're talking with our colleagues.
Yeah.
They know what our needs are too. And so.
Be happy to answer that.
Yeah, so that's my first question.
Sure, sure, I, I'd be happy to answer that for you. You know, being up in Lansing on a full-time basis, I work on behalf of the city. I'm an extension of, of the city of Ypsilanti up in Lansing. I set up meetings with Senator Irwin. I set up meetings with Representative Jimmy Wilson. I articulate the needs of the city to these individuals. I articulate the needs of these needs to Senator Sarah Anthony, who heads the Senate Appropriations Committee. I have meetings constantly with these people. I go to, I, I do fundraisers, I do whatever it takes to bring the city of Ypsilanti's needs to the forefront. And I was, I was excited that they, that they saw the need and that they fulfilled it. Now, for me to take credit for that, it's a team effort. You know, I will tell you, Representative Wilson has been instrumental because he's the one that pulls the trigger. He's the one that helps appropriate the funds. Representative Angela Whitworth, when she came down here to Ann Arbor, we had our, we had an opportunity to articulate our need and she appropriated the funds. But if it wasn't for GCSI to be an integral part of that process, I don't know if that would have been taken care of or not. I can't say it would have been, but I know that me being engaged on behalf of the city has yielded the, the results that you see before you.
Can I, I would like to add on to that because I think that, that, okay, in the ten years I've been on council, you know, Mr. Gill, I've seen more than any person who's represented us and actually put me in front of people to, to articulate our needs and talk about the importance of, you know, them supporting our senator and our state rep in terms of when they're, you know, going to vote on what's going to go into the budget. I got to sit in front of Senator, Senator Anthony and talk with her about why, you know, we wanted her to be a champion for us in our community. And that to me is like really integral because those relationships, relationships that GCSI and Dwayne has allowed for those conversations and those meetings to happen and then to be able to advocate for us when we are not present. And so when, you know, all of these things, when we see funds coming down, everybody takes credit for it because it is everyone who's doing their, their part as it moves through, you know, the steps in the process up in Lansing. But in reality, in the gap, when we are not present, our representative is who is there making sure that people don't forget that this is a request that we have and a need for our community. And so I will say you've played an integral role in that, in that fund.
Thank you.
Coming down because, you know, you were updating me, all right? I talked to Senator Anthony again, it's still top of mind. I spoke to Jimmy today, he's going to go talk to this person.
Yes, ma'am.
To make sure that those conversations were ongoing and we didn't, we weren't forgotten, which we have seen happen, right? Where like we've been at the top of the list for something and not advocated for, you know, in our absence, and then it disappears.
Yes, thank you.
So I, I will say, this is specifically in the last year, I have seen a difference and Ypsilanti is being talked about in ways that I haven't seen in years past.
I appreciate that and I will continue to do that. And thank you so much for your support and those kind words.
Thank you. Additional questions, Councilmember Simmons, are you done?
Oh, my other, my other question was just looking at the list of the lobbying efforts and just trying to get a sense of, so these are obviously kind of still in conversation, right? These aren't one, these aren't things that have come through or are these things that have come through?
I don't, I don't have the list.
Also, it says DPS Yard Modernization Study, DPS Yard Emergency Repairs.
Okay.
Cross Street Bridge.
Okay, I'd be happy to explain that. And those were the priorities that were given to me by the city of Ypsilanti. And obviously, those priorities totaled around three million dollars. So again, I was able to obtain the money for you to act on those priorities. So after I get the money, that's up to, that's up to City Council and the, the city manager to allocate those funds to where the greatest needs are. I, my job is just to get you the, the green.
City manager?
Uh, in terms of that earmark, we have not yet received it.
Yeah, October first.
Yeah, October first, we, we will be receiving that. From what I understand, it, there's going to be stipulations on how that, those funds can be, be used. We have already put out to bid the stabilization RFP. And the phase two has been complete at the yard, so we'll be moving forward with those repairs. And then a, a more permanent solution will, will be used for the, that three million dollar earmark. And that's also going to be for the Frog Island parking lot. The Cross Street Bridge, we, there's, funding for that will be more easily come by than funds for the DPW yard as well as the Frog Island parking lot. So we're still in process of en, engaging, engaging for funds for that. And yeah, so that's, that's the update on that.
So, so it was just a, it's a earmark, but also, and I think I failed to discuss this, in this year's budget, there also was some uptick in revenue sharing. So there, I was, I was in the middle of a lot of different conversations where Ypsilanti was one of the, one of the, I want to say, I don't want to say winners, but one of the, the big receivers of a larger amount of dollars than they have gotten before in the new revenue sharing formula. So, and that took place up in Lansing on, on our watch as well. Go right ahead.
City manager?
And this is information that I provided to council, the, the allo, not allocation specifically to us, but in terms of state funding for intergovernmental transfers that went up by around two hundred million. And also, there is going to be an allocation that I also explained to City Council regarding public safety. And that's going to be based off metrics concerning crime statistics and other, other variables in order to receive those, that funding. So that will be coming, coming down, down the pipe as well.
Yep. And I kept, City Manager and I, we have a very cohesive relationship. We talk on the, on the, on the regular along with the mayor and whatnot. So any other questions?
Mayor Pro Tem?
I have to ask.
Sure.
Why didn't you get us more?
I, you know what? That is a fair question. I appreciate what you did ask for and I was, I'll be honest with you, I was happy to get what I got. But I'm gonna, I'm, I'll be sitting down with you all for your priorities in the next term. And I plan on going to the mat just as hard as I did this year for you next year.
And just, just one comment, I was in conversations with Eagle, with HRWCE, conversations with them about, about the dam removal, but I, I appreciate that there are other conversations that had to be had.
Absolutely.
You know, speaking with Senator Irwin, you know, he had to, to weigh in on that as well. And just having, having a councilperson and, and folks from HRWCE was, you know, although they had, had prioritized that they split the funding over two cycles.
Yeah, they did.
And we were very concerned.
A little nervous.
There would, there wouldn't, the, the follow-through wouldn't be there and.
But it was.
I appreciate that it, that it came through, so.
Thank you, Steve. Mayor Pro Tem, thank you.
Further comments or questions from council, from Mr. Gill, Councilmember Sweet?
Good evening.
Good to see you.
Uh, you as well. I just wanted to say that I know last time we had this contract come before us, I was skeptical, if you will, and and did not support the, the contract at that time.
I understand.
But this year I have seen the work that you've done and have heard from colleagues and administration about, you know, the benefit of your work. So I would gladly support your ongoing work with us.
And I appreciate that, sir, and that means a lot to me. I, I tell you, I, I really enjoy working for the city of Ypsilanti. It's been a pleasure and I'm proud to do it. Thank you.
Regarding to the actual contract, I can confirm that there is an actual contract that I've reviewed and drafted and approved as to form and it's someplace in transit.
Andrew has sent it out to us.
We got it.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember King, is that a? Oh, I just, you know, I just wanted to make sure. Any other comments or questions from council?
I guess I'll just give the last comment and share that even in that discussion, though I voted yes, I went really hard about what we deserve in the city and what your predecessors did and did not do for us.
Yes, you did.
Over the last year, you have definitely shown up and showed that, you know, you as an individual deserved a shot to show us what you could do and you produced.
I appreciate it.
I really do appreciate your work and look forward to continuing working with you.
That means the world to me. Thank you so much.
If there is nothing else, Clerk, would you all please call the rule?
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you and congratulations. All right. The next item on our agenda is a request from Sustainability Commission, but there was no formal resolution. Have a good night. Thank you. So.
I was looking for the resolution from them. Everything should come to council from the commissions in a resolution.
Yeah.
And I was not able to find that.
So they did not submit one or just we couldn't find it?
So I have not seen the minutes? And I, yeah, I haven't been able to find a resolution. I don't know if it was, was written or not yet. I'm just not sure.
Our liaison, do you have any?
Yeah, and I guess this might be a little bit of a like, I guess, a order thing or like how this, how some of this works because they put it forward and voted on it. And, and then, you know, so for it to come to council. But I guess like sometimes I'm like, oh, we put forward things and then we, the staff creates a resolution for us to have. So I don't know what that looks like in this order.
If I may, I'm, I'm working on figuring out what that looks like too.
Yeah.
So I apologize if I should have had it ready for you. I just wasn't sure what they were asking for it for, you know, what it was about.
Mr. Barr and then?
Well, there is a little disconnect on this. As I remember, the way that a resolution gets to the council is that either the mayor suggested or two council members. And that's, council should decide if they want to follow that or not.
For commissions.
Yes, for commissions. Can a commission come and propose something to council or does it require the mayor or two council members? And the idea of having two council members is that if you need to have a motion and a second. And so that was the idea. So rather than taking the time of meeting without things even getting on the, voted on, then that would, that's what's happened in the past.
And also, I mean, I think at the last council meeting, when we were talking about the process, we said that the process was for it to come from the commission to council for budget requests as we are without an updated process. So we were following what that process was. So, yeah, so I guess we should, I guess, clarify all of those pieces.
Yeah.
And we've run into this before with a couple of different commissions. And so we did talk about the process for how they would present the information. Typically if this were, so then is it, is it incumbent upon staff to do that? Or is it incumbent upon the liaison to the commission to do that? Because if, you know, in order to get it on this agenda, how, who?
How did it get here?
How did it get here?
Yeah, I emailed saying the commission voted for this. I'm bringing it forward for discussion for council.
So that would have to be supported by somebody else or that?
Correct. It, so the, the process that we have, had been following, and I also provided this to Boards of Commissions, is the Board of Commission votes to put something on an agenda. If there's two members of council that, that support it, it could go right on the agenda. If not, it would go on communications from Boards of Commissions. And then at that meeting, council could determine if it would like to take this up. Yep.
I would like to, right now, be the second for that coming forward. If there had not been one.
Yeah, I don't know. Okay, perfect. Okay.
I think Councilmember King, I think was copied on it.
Oh.
I think.
I can't remember.
So there was?
Yeah, I don't remember. I was trying to check my emails. I got it right now. I don't know that, I don't know if I had for that one, but okay. So currently we have support either way. And so right now we're going to then consider this.
Yes.
All right, wonderful. So, yeah, so, you know, they were having this conversation. I know we can remember when Commissioner Behe was working on this before and trying to get funds to be able to use in planning. And last year received the funds pretty late. Last year, I think, so last year council provided $1,500 to support the Earth Day event. During this conversation, she did push for the increased amount. And so that's what I put forward for council to consider. I would say that my personal feeling is that I would not increase to the $3,000. I don't feel like we had enough information to do that. But it's not my job to pre-legislate. So that's why I put forward with the, with the commission did pass. So they voted on the 3,000. They did. Yes. It did not pass unanimously, but they did vote on the 3,000.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I guess in the absence of, in light of that and in the absence of the actual information in terms of what that would be used for with the form that we discussed at the last meeting, I would vote to table this until we get that, that form submitted from the commission. I move to, I'm, I'm going to hold on to that for a second. Question is, when can we get that from Sustainability Commission?
Well, we don't, what is the form? So as far as I know, during the last conversation, there was a work group that was going to work on that. And in the meantime, what we said, because I was, I would try to be really clear about it of like what we're doing in the meantime, which was just that they just had to put in the request. So until, I don't know where the work group is that was going to work on that process, but we did not say that we were going to wait until that gets worked out.
No, but there's already a form.
And we were going to update the form. Yeah, there's, oh, there's a form for them to do. There's already a form, but we wanted more detail, I think, and to change things on the form because it wasn't as clear as it could be, I believe. So there is a form for them to use currently and a process. So then if that can be sent back to them, then the question that Mayor Pro Tem asked is how soon can we get the form? Mr. Barr?
According to Roberts, there is some confusion about tabling and postponing. If you table it, just takes it off the table. It has to be brought back again. If you postpone it to a definite time, then it comes back definitely then.
And then he didn't move anything. He was going to, but then he stopped himself.
I understand tabling it.
There's no discussion.
There's no discussion, but I also have to bring it back at the next meeting. Well, that's why I'm, I'm asking.
What's the point?
Whether I'm going to table it or whether I'm going to postpone it because if I table it and we still don't have the information, we're not updating again.
Well, we can, I'm happy to send it to, I think this is just really an issue of confusion and lack of clarity that seems to keep going back and forth. So.
What is your next meeting?
The Sustainability Commission just had its meeting for this month, so it won't have another one until October. You know, so they've already met for this month. But that doesn't mean that they, you know, they can't work on putting together the form to get to council. So I know that time is of essence of having it figured out. So I'm happy to put that communication out to both the chair as well as Commissioner Behe so that they can work on that. So the form that they're supposed to use is on the city website.
I just reported.
It's not, it's, it is or is not on the city website already? I don't know. I just want to confirm how they're supposed to find this form that they're supposed to do. Well, we all have it. So you can send it to them as the liaison. I don't exactly know if it comes from staff or if it's on the city website, but we do have it. We, we, we have it now because it just got emailed to us. We had it before in our email too. He just forwarded the same email that had it in there.
But I guess you're just trying to clarify how would any commission get the form?
Yeah, I think. I'm just saying if there's a process, to me, if there's training, there should be whatever, they should have all of the stuff for what they need to do. So I think whatever we put for the commissioners for training and all the information, that they should have access to it because, so that they could do their business. And if they, if they're, if, if I'm hearing that they were told that there's this process, what they're supposed to do and how information flows, then I think that this should just be part of it. So I will forward this along and ask for them, you know, to get it for, to us so we can have it for that next meeting.
And that's what I was going to ask. I'm, I'm sorry to talk without. That's what I was going to ask. Is this a form that needs to be filled out at the meeting? So again, we don't come back because I know some of the issues we had on HRC, like hey, did it happen in public meeting? Like, is this a form that can be filled out outside of the meeting? Or does Councilmember Simmons have to wait until the next meeting? I just want to clarify it.
I wouldn't think so. One, this, this committee does, they, they already voted on it. And then they also aren't subject to the, well, they, they, they don't elect, they haven't elected to continue with the OMA the same way that HRC, although I know we got email from Attorney Barr about that too. But so, yeah, so that would be, so, but I think, I appreciate that clarity. So I wouldn't want that to hinder them again. So Mr. Barr, can, can we just ask for clarification there? They voted on a, a motion at the Sustainability Commission, so they would not need to complete this form in that meeting? And they've already given their direction?
Well, that's a process question that I'm not involved in, but
Okay.
It suggests that what the commission needs to do is inform council. And so how that's done. They voted on it. I, I would suggest that the members of the commission get together and fill out the form and give council the information that they need to make a decision. And I'm not, I don't know how to tell them how to do that.
Well, they're not subject to the OMA, so.
But as long as there's not a quorum.
You can, you could just table this and then they could bring it back with another motion or you could, you could postpone it to the next meeting and hope that they get the material in by that time.
I would suggest having the, the, the chair of the commission and the organizer of this event sit down, fill out the form and provide it to council.
And then present it to a council member to bring to the council.
All right.
Councilmember McLean?
Question before you moved to postpone. I think this is a question perhaps for the liaison. I think I heard you say that when they voted on it, it was not a unanimous vote. Do you have any information you can share on that discussion and why some members of the commission didn't support that?
Because, because the information about the increase was not shared.
Oh, why the increase from 15 to 3,000?
Yes. At least, at least that was one of, I'm trying to remember. I think there are two people who voted no, and that was with one of the people had said specifically, which I, I agreed. I, I agree with that personally. But maybe having this kind of pulled out more information than that information would be there. Mayor Pro Tem? Oh. Well, I was just going to say, I mean, I don't know if it matters or not because obviously business has to continue. So, but just to name the difference between the tabling or postponing is I will not be here for that October 1st meeting. And so, yeah, so if you wanted to have the liaison present to give more information, then I won't be here for a tabling since that's our next meeting. So I just want.
Okay. So this event isn't until April.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So we have some time to deal with that. I won't be here on the 15th. I move to postpone this to the November 12th meeting.
Been moved by Mayor Pro Tem and supported by Councilmember Tucson to postpone till November, what, 12th?
12th.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Councilmember Simmons?
Just, again, this is like a process. So we wait until November 12th. I'm trying to count backwards in terms of timing because it is, it's actually in March, the end of March. So that's three, four, you know, I'm, I'm trying to, what is the, once we vote for, if we vote and we pass it, when would those funds be available for use? Like it?
Well, it, it really depends. I mean, who are, who would the city be writing the check out to? Typically for something like this, we would want an invoice to understand where these are going so we can make payments. So it's, I mean, we could kind of check the next check run day, but I would want to know where are these funds going and who are we supposed to give them to?
It doesn't go to Julia Behe, it goes to contract.
Unless she has, yeah, unless she's getting reimbursed or unless somebody's getting reimbursed for expended, expended funds. But it could also go directly to the different vendors that she would identify. But that could happen. I just want to make, I'm just trying to think about that time lag because, you know, for, even though the event is still, is in March, right? You know, securing certain things you want to do earlier, you don't want to probably be right up at the end in December. So that's why I was just trying to figure out what that timeline would be if we're waiting until November.
I mean, it would really be based on how quickly we can get invoices in order to make payment. So if we don't get those quickly, the payments won't happen quickly.
But if she got them like on November, you know, November 13th, they could start to be paid out.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion on the postponement? See, non-clerk, would you all please call the rule?
To postpone until November 12th. Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion to postpone carries unanimous.
November 12th. And then, I'm, just, I'm sorry, just for clarity, just like, so they'll fill out the form and then should I write a resolution to bring it forward? I feel like that's still now, you know, so when we get the form, we need a resolution. Would staff write a resolution based on that or do I have to write a resolution? Or can I ask staff to write a resolution?
Councilmember, you are always welcome to ask me to write any resolution that you would like. As long as I have the information, I can absolutely write it.
Okay, thank you. I just want to.
Yep.
Okay.
That's my job for you guys always.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right. Councilmember King, you have our next resolution.
Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti where section 11.05 of the city charter requires a unanimous council vote to hire the child of an appointed official or department head. And whereas the city clerk needs additional election support and her daughter Molly Boudreaux is qualified to perform the work and therefore be resolved that the clerk be authorized to hire her daughter Molly Boudreaux as a contract election supporter. So move.
Support.
The move by Councilmember King, supported by Councilmember Tucson. Mr. Barr? We can't discuss it without him? Oh, absolutely. Okay. Thank you. Clerk, would you?
So when I started here, we already had two contract employees working to help us with elections. We currently still have two, but their availability is quite limited. One person has a full-time job, so is only available kind of after business hours. And then the second person who is retired and is more available has just had a grandchild and has informed me that she won't be available. and has informed me that she won't be available through this um election cycle. She's gonna be here next week to help me get the ballots out, um, but then she's unavailable for the rest of the election cycle. That put me into a little bit of a tailspin. Um, it's not easy to find help that is qualified, that has any of the skills. Um, you know, taking time to teach someone as a clerk, under the pressures of an election, it's almost easier just to try to do the work yourself and kill yourself. So.
Don't do that.
Oh, yeah, please, no.
You know, you know what I mean? Finding someone who um already has the skill set is difficult. Um, and we found people, uh, and we do have two qualified people that have the skill set. Um, but as I said, the one has basically become unavailable through the rest of the election cycle. Um, my daughter did work for me in the city of Dearborn um as a voting assistant for four years. Um, and she left there. Uh, she worked the August election with them, um, but she's kind of moving on to other things. And she would be available for the amount of work that I'm looking for. I'm really looking for one to two days a week and then several days during the week of the election. Getting somebody qualified to use the Qualified Voter File, QVF, which is our state voter file, um, takes some training as well. Um, it's not difficult, but it's time consuming. You have to go through a couple of online classes. This would save that time as well, um, because my daughter was already, uh, you know, had a login and had done the training and was certified. And all I'd have to do is transfer that so that she could um come on board and work with us. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Questions, councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, so um I have uh one one question and then a suggestion. Um, so you talked about that, you started talking about this a little bit, but I just would like to, so thinking about what would be the, like, how much time would this take for this to be an open position for if it were to go out? You know, what that turnaround would look like? And then, as you're saying, training, whether a person came with training, I don't know if we could put that even in a call for a position that you come with training. Um, but yeah, just kind of trying to get a sense of, you know, what that would look like if we were to post this as a position.
Um, so I I have found in the past that it's very difficult to get uh anyone that has any experience um or any training on election work. Typically, they want a full-time job, right? They they would like a regular job and not something um that's temporary uh and very minimal hours. So I've I've had difficulty with that before. Um, and at this point, you know, just having found out um that one of my people is gonna be taking off to help take care of a baby. Um, I don't feel like we have the time for that. Um, I will say one of the other avenues um that I'm exploring is calling in a few of our election workers. Um, I got the chance to work with them um at early voting and on election day. Um, and there are several uh who are always looking for more work. Some people have come and they've worked early voting with us as well. Um, and through that, they've offered extra assistance. Um, so that was my hope was to have them come in and assist with some of that, but not the QVF stuff. Um, because again, it takes time and you have to be trained um before you can use it at all. So it would be doing the other tasks that don't require uh utilizing QVF, stuffing ballots, um, you know, helping us get all of those mailed out.
And then is the person who is taking time now, or is the expectation that they would be available in the future? Or um when you're saying like full-time, because this is just somebody who would be coming in for specific times?
Um, yes, uh, the expectation is that um the two people we've already hired will come back in the future, yes. Um, and then because it's contract work, you know, it's kind of whenever you want, right? You can have them come in and do some work, you don't have to have them for a while, but they're still a contract employee. So as the election season comes back around, we could just have them working again.
City manager had something, I'm sorry.
I think it's important to not think of this person as an employee, this is a professional services contract. So they are not an employee, it's very limited in the scope that they would do. In the past, for general elections, we have used election inspectors to help stuff ballots, make sure things are organized. But this this would be, it's not something you would you would post because it's very limited. It would, it lasts around a month. Um, and then if you don't have the training, again, it takes a little bit of time to get that person. The software is not complicated, but when you just want to hit, you want someone that can just hit the ground running in order so you don't have that learning curve.
And so that gets to my next, my suggestion, which is um putting a time period on in this language. Because I think it just says like for the election, but maybe being clear what that, whatever that stop is. I don't know if there's some time like after the election that's necessary, right? But whatever that span of time, just to make it more clear.
Um, so it it would be my hope that she could um maybe help us in future elections. But if that's not what council wants, I completely understand. Um, and then that's what I would suggest. If if you um only want to grant this permission to me for this November election, um, then I would say yes. Set an end date of um maybe February, February? Uh, that gives me the opportunity to utilize um these contract workers to help clear up all of the paperwork um after the election. There are, there are all of these notices that come back that we have to, you know, put into QVF to start the countdown for when a voter is canceled. Um, it takes a long time, but you have to notice that. And especially with the college students, man, do we get a lot of these returned to us as having changed their address. Um, so there's a lot of paperwork uh that after the election I'd like to shore up as well. So i- if you wanted it to end and only be that for this election, I would ask that maybe you allow it through the end of February.
Mayor Protem.
For me, it would have been helpful to see her credentials other than just.
I'm sorry.
So a a resume would have been good. Um, the question is, I know that 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 uh city manager has the the capacity and you have the capacity to do contract work up to a certain amount. So the timing was one question I had, but also that payout. Um, you know, what is the, what is the cap on on contractual services?
So this is a professional services contract, so it doesn't necessarily need to go to council. It doesn't have to be uh bid out um for the February presidential primary. It was for both contractors, it cost the city a little over two thousand dollars.
Nope, we're not, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, it's not a ton of money, no. Um, and I will say um she would be the cheapest of the three. Not that that matters, but in terms of hourly rate.
Mr. Barr, you had something too, everybody? All right, councilmember Sweet and then McLean.
Um, my question is, who would approve, once the contract is written, who from staff approves that? Is it you or is it city manager?
City attorney would draft the contract and uh the city clerk would be the individual that signs.
Councilmember McLean.
Just gonna raise a question along those lines perhaps, but but first, I was gonna ask if the terms of this contract would be similar to or the same as the terms for the other, the other.
That would be my hope, the same terms, yes.
Okay, and then the other thing that I was going to mention is, and I don't know that this needs to be part of this motion, but procedurally, uh, maybe look to Mr. Barr for this. But uh who should sign off on this person's, on your daughter's hours? I might suggest that if there's a way to do that where it's not you would be good.
Um, so with um time sheets for anyone in my department, usually uh my deputy signs and then I sign. She signs as a supervisor and then I sign as the department head. Um, so that does at least allow a secondary signature in there. Someone else is looking at it besides me. Let's say I'll go through payroll.
In regard to the actual process, uh, if requested by the manager, I would draft the contract and then the clerk would sign the contract. Uh, technically, the clerk has up to five thousand dollars signing authority, the manager has twenty-five thousand. Once the contract is approved and the person is retained, and the usual city processes as described by the clerk would apply.
So just a quick question, are these contracts normally yearly or are they more or longer?
Really just depends on what you would want. Um, they're not necessarily yearly, there's usually just the election cycle and then they would expire.
Like the two people that we have now, they, does this come before us every year?
No.
I mean, not every year, but every election year.
This would not, the only reason this is before council right now is because it's the daughter of the clerk.
Okay. So, so this gets at that question about the timeline or not. So it's coming to us because, just because the first time, so if a person is hired one time, then it makes makes them open to be able to be hired anytime?
Right, I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't call it hiring, it's your your contract.
Okay, so.
It would just be the terms of the contract. So it's really whatever makes sense for that. If it's a contract employee, you would just have them work until the necessary work is concluded. If you use them in the future, you would have another contract.
And so that's what I'm saying, so with the, if if there's another contract, would they have to come back to council again?
If it's an employee, yes. If it's a relative of an employee, yes.
Always come to us.
Or the chart.
Yes, so then, so then I I guess then to the point of the timeline and thinking about the contracts for the other folks that we have had. Do those just not, those also not have an end date? What what is considered the end of the election cycle?
I, the end of the election cycle to me is the certification of the general election.
Which happens.
Which happens.
Two weeks after the election.
Yeah, two weeks after the election.
Um, and so that would just sound, that would be just a little different than what you were just requesting in terms of the end being the end of February for ongoing services that might happen um after the election cycle. So I don't, that's, I just want to kind of figure out what pieces are either the same and considered what that timeline is. Um, or there's something that's a different expectation or something that we're setting forward for this particular contract. So can I, maybe for clarification, so the these two folks that we're talking about that already exist, did you initiate this new contract with them? Or was that already in place when you were hired?
It was already in place because they were hired um for the February primary. Um, so it was already in place in the election cycle, obviously.
And so for me, I would clarify that while our city manager was our previous clerk, the dates that he considers the end may not be what you feel is the end as our new clerk. And so these two, these contracts may not mirror each other in this situation, because those existed prior to you being retained. Um, again, we, I want to, we can put whatever the parameter on as a council, but I want to just clarify that piece, that those contracts existed before your tenure with us. Um, so if folks want to make a motion for something, feel free, but I just wanted to clear that up.
I would just note that I would be open to the idea of it being a little longer than that, two weeks. Um, we live in interesting times and one never quite knows when an election might be over. I think Mr. Gore might be able to say something about that.
Absolutely true, if there's a recount or a recall, it will go on and on into the new year.
Yeah, the city manager.
I would like to note that council's not approving the contract, council's just approving and relative of an employee be contracted. The contract is not on the table already.
Right, right.
Councilmember Simmons?
He understands that, the reason I was asking is just to have more clarity as we're trying to make, as we're talking about hiring a relative. So that's why I was bringing that forward, knowing that we don't have the full contract or anything. But in the resolution and things, being able to to make that, have that clarity, I think would be helpful. But if other people don't feel like it's helpful or necessary, then that's fine, but I'm just bringing that forward.
Further comments or questions? All right, seeing none, clerk, would you please call the rule?
Mayor Protem Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember McLean.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you, council. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Um, all right, we're at Liaison Reports, Police Advisory.
Um, yeah, the Police Advisory Commission will be meeting here in council chambers on September twenty-sixth, that's a Thursday at seven P M. Um, one of our commissioners, Gail Walcoff, just did um orientation with the two new officers into IPB. So I'm interested in seeing, well, hearing from uh Gail what they discussed. Um, and I hope that you all attend to and air whatever you want to talk about at the commission meeting. Thank you.
Uh, HRC?
So in light of our last meeting, well, after the last meeting, we were full. But we got information that one of the people that was appointed decided not to take that spot. I did put on, I did ask for it to be put on agenda to, yes, to to appoint. So right now I'm moving to appoint Raven Kaplan to, no, I said it wrong, to HRC.
It's been moved by councilmember King.
Support.
Supported by councilmember Simmons. Discussion.
So again, I would just say she was one of the young ladies on the, she was one of the people on our last meeting. And we didn't get to her because we were full, but now that a spot has opened up, I just wanted to go ahead and reappoint.
Further discussion, the comments from council? Councilmember Sweet.
Can I ask who the um person was that is no longer?
Absolutely.
Lisa Volker.
Okay. Not interested or missed the deadline, just take it out?
She she has employment that precludes her.
Issue, okay, gotcha, thank you.
Further comments or discussion? All right, clerk, would you please call the rule?
Councilmember Sweet.
No.
Councilmember Tucson.
No.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Councilmember McLean.
No.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Motion fails.
Thank you. You have additional report from HRC?
I would just say we still have one spot open, so if someone wants to apply, we um want you to come. Thank you, that's all. Oh, and we have a meeting, I guess, on Thursday, I'm sorry. We have a meeting on Thursday here at six P M.
All right, thank you, Parks and Arts.
I've had a productive meeting yesterday evening, uh, talked about several things. We welcomed two new members to the commission, talked about both the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, um, Youth Port Lawyer Program. And then um a lot of details around Fall River Day, which is this our last meeting before that happens. So that is Sunday, the twenty-ninth, from twelve to three at Far Island Park with free kayak trips from Far Island to Ford Lake. I know.
Uh, sustainability?
Um, well, we already talked about one of the things, uh, the Sustainability Commission co-hosted an event um last night um on sustainable, um, on Resiliency Hub Network. And um I'll talk a little bit more about some of the things that came out of that, I think. We, but um, or, well, actually, they had um. One of the, one of the things they did was um had folks kind of work on these um some mini zines. Um, and this isn't nearly all of them, um, but uh it was interesting, just kind of again, getting community voice around different things, around um twenty-four hour shelter. Um, and and talking about how helping homeless people helps to lower crime rates. Um, uh, meeting groups for young and old, um, and different resources. Um, uh, meeting groups for young and old, um, and different resources that some of those different groups would need. Um, uh, housing again, um, and, and also some other services. Um, um, and then also uh this one is on, yeah, Resiliency Hub pieces and thinking about different things that um folks need, like bathrooms, um sanitation spaces. Um, and uh some different basics that they see that are necessary. So it was a really packed meeting. Um, we had more participants than the previous two sessions, which were also pretty well attended. So I think that there is a lot of interest in this and um a lot of folks who haven't typically had um space or been able to kind of talk about these issues had an opportunity to do so. Um, and so I'm really looking forward to going through all the information and thinking about some of the things that will come next out of that. But um I think that there'll be more work, working on the Community Resiliency Guide, um Resource Guide, that the commission um has been wanting to get started, and I think that this project will help them um make some moves on that.
Thank you. H D C?
Early short meeting on September the tenth. The primary item that was covered was ten Washington Street. Uh, that's a sign. It's the third of three signs for Cold Comfort. Uh, that's the uh shop, the business that will take the place of Go Ice Cream.
Planning Commission?
Uh, there was not a meeting since our last.
Z B A?
Hmm, I was not notified that there was a meeting, so there may have been.
Uh, S M C O G?
S M C O G. Uh, there's a couple of things coming up for S M C O G, uh, October seventh. Uh, there's a uh meeting on cybersecurity. October is Cybersecurity Month. Uh, so there's a webinar, webinar on the seventh. I'm happy to forward that information. That's at one P M. And then October twenty-fourth uh is General Assembly, and that's an all-day um meeting that I will be attending for that.
All right. What? We haven't had a meeting.
All right, um, Ermin County, I was at M M L and I think Katie attended. I don't know what. I will have to get information on Ermin County. Um, D D A meeting is this Thursday. Rutherford Pool.
Rutherford Pool. I was not able to uh attend the meeting uh due to a conflict, um, that being M M L. Um, so I, I was looking at the, the minutes from uh, from the July meeting. Um, I think they postponed the August meeting, but things have gone well this year. Um, you recall that the pool is resurfaced. Um, there are some issues with the building that, that they're going through, the minor things. Uh, you know, they redid the bathhouse. There are some things there that, that need some attention from uh, from the builders that they had uh engaged for that. Um, they engaged a company called B and B to do uh, to do that work. So they're going with that. Um, they're also looking at some clarification of uh the um. They use a company to open the pool and trying to figure out, you know, that we've got uh the pump system for the pool is, is old. So they've redone the bathhouse, they've redone the pool, the pumps and things are, are still considerably old. So dealing with that and whose, whose job it is to take care of those things and what responsibilities are uh up to staff. And so Eric, uh, one of the people that has been working there for a number of years, um, has generally taken care of that, but they're looking to get some clarification on that. So that they have, if they're engaging services to have that be part of uh service as well, so. They've uh taken some economic measures to uh put some money into uh CDs to um ensure uh funding uh in the future, so um that uh I think that's it.
All right, thank you. Our council proposed business, councilmember King?
Um, I was at a neighborhood association meeting on Saturday, and I think I brought this question to council before, but they were talking about the speed bumps on Monroe. And I know Bonnie is not here tonight, but I'm just wondering if anybody from council remember if that was something that was voted on and if that is something that was supposed to happen or need. Because um Mayor Lois was there and Brand Jones Chance was there also, and they said before their term ended, from their memory, it was voted on. I did also let them know that if it was something that was voted on right now as a time that they would probably be coming up, so it probably would not happen until next year. And I'm just wondering if anyone has any information on, was that already voted on?
Um, I'm not entirely sure, but I do recall something in that area. Um, but I could do some research and find a resolution or not find a resolution and update council.
Okay, okay. Sounds good. That's all I have on my council proposed business tonight. Thank you. Councilmember Simmons?
Yes, so um I have a few things. Um, go to the top. One, so I will, uh, just so folks know, we, a few of us were at the Michigan Municipal League uh Conference. And um, and just to note, I'll bring forward some of the things that I learned from that and try to share um with the community in different ways. Um, one, uh, one of the sessions I went to um was around, surprise, surprise, composting. Um, and waste reduction and um different things. So I'll, I'll be bringing some things forward from that. Um, that um feel like really good fits for the city as well as some things that could be a longer-term project. Um, but one of the things, um, as an example, that came out of that was thinking about, it was really around reducing food waste. Um, and one of the ways that food is wasted is from restaurants. Um, and um, and one of the things was having the food to be able to be donated. And the person talked about how some restaurants will um say why they can't donate food, um, but that that actually does not, is, is not the case. Um, and um, and just last night, um, at the event we were at, um, as I said, um, there was uh food that was purchased for the event, but there also was another um big lot of food that had been donated from Zingerman's, actually. Um, and I thought it was going to be too much food. I thought it was going to be like, I was like, we're going to have so much food left over. But um especially because we had a large population of folks who are unhoused come and we were able to get to go, to go containers. Um, almost all of it um was, was gone, um, both in terms of what people ate then and then things that people took um for, along with them. And, and so I just say that to say, you know, wouldn't it be great if we, and I know some of our restaurants do donate food and things like that, but um really thinking about um different ways that we can build up those partnerships so that we could really support and show the love um of the community in this way. Um, so um, so that the folks um that are on the margins are actually able to contribute to the community because they were able to participate fully in our meeting, um, given, given um some of those circumstances around the food. So that was um a lot of, I'm taking a lot out of that session. Um, and I'll bring other things from that too. Um, another thing, um, oh, I forgot to mention this, but um this might, this is, is part of what the Sustainability Commission did. But um they also talked about suggestions and adjustments for the C B O. And so I wanted to just clarify um how those should come forward or if we have a date and we're going to, I think we're going to have a work session on the C B O. And so, but I, I thought it was going to be, I, I don't know when I thought it was going to be now. I thought it might have been this month, but is it October? I don't know if we have a plan for when we're going to actually have that work session.
So i- i- initially it was supposed to happen this month. It's taken a little bit more time to get um notes from towards the commission. So once we have that compiled, um, I, then we'll schedule a work session and then from that we can work towards having amendments and then bringing that forward with the first reading.
So then should the, are the commissions supposed to send notes somewhere?
Yeah, the, the staff liaison should be compiling these and providing them to clerk staff and myself so we can put them together.
Okay, so I'll just make sure that that is moving in that way. Thank you. And so, and then we'll have the C B O sometime after we get all of those.
Correct. Yeah, once we have the, the compiled suggestions, see if there's overlap somewhere and then forward that to council. So council has an opportunity to see it, have our work session, and then whatever is developed in that workshop session, it'll give staff some type of idea on how council would like us to move forward. We'll make those amendment, uh, we'll, we'll draft the amendments and then uh schedule a public hearing.
Thank you. And then another question. So the Planning Commission, I know we were going to set up a work group um for the what is it? For short-term rentals. Um, did the Planning Commission have a chance to talk about that during their last meeting or?
No, because we haven't, we talked about that.
Okay, so that's coming up still. Okay, great. Thanks. I just want to keep track. Um, and then um, I know I, I sent an email and to our city manager and police chief um just with some questions that I've been getting um from the community about um a lockdown of a few of the schools within Y C S. That was on Friday. Um, and um just so the public knows, so I was asking questions just about Y P D's um um response, whether Y P D was involved in the response. Um, uh, in terms of the communication, like what is the protocol that is what is expected as well as the communication chain and how that is supposed to work? Um, and then also just in terms of understanding what was the risk and um a lot of folks were really upset. Um, including a lot of children, young children, um, to see police officers with really big guns, um, kind of walking down the hallways. And so trying to get some information. And so our police chief said that he's gathering information, connecting with other agencies that were part of the response and um will um provide us with more information. So I just want to let folks know that uh more information is forthcoming as folks are trying to untangle all of what happened. Um, also, um, I have a question. So I know as we've talked about some of the challenges that have been going on downtown and what are the resources and especially resources um from the county. Um, I'm just trying to figure out kind of what some of this is looking like. Um, so one was around the path team. Um, and figuring out, um, I was under the impression that there was a team that was going to be in um visiting the downtown area and talking with folks there, and also that we have a team that's dedicated to I P C. Um, a core response team also to support. Um, uh, and um, and just trying to figure out some resources. Um, when I also asked about resources for uh people who use drugs. Um, um, the main challenge is that there's two, um, the, there's two, like uh Homo New Vision and Don Farm that are both abstinence-based. And then the other one, um, the methadone clinic where people um also would go, uh, people are not um going as much because they're, um, the police are there and picking up folks for different warrants and things. And so um that is cutting down on use and participation at that resource. So I'm just trying to get a better sense, and I don't know who's has, would have information about these county resources that I thought was supposed to be helping with this issue.
Um, I've been in uh contact a, a, a little bit with uh C M H and I, if we, an issue arises, we let them, let the county know, they send a path team. But I also know that they are regularly um in, in the city, but I, in terms of a schedule, I, I don't have that. I can reach out to C M H to, to get a better understanding of time spent in the city.
Yes, thank you, because I was trying to talk to some folks on the ground there and they weren't sure that they've seen path there, so. Um, and then the other thing, and I know you were going to send me an email update about Troy Street. I got another phone call this morning. Um, wanting an update. So I don't know, I, I know you were going to connect with code enforcement.
Oh, yeah, I, that's, that's still in process. I also met with uh one of the individuals involved with that. Um, and I, but I have been in contact with code enforcement, so I can get an update and get back to you as well.
Thank you. And then um also the Washington on Hamilton, um uh issues that drivers have with not knowing that they can't go straight in the right turn-only lane. And I noticed today that there are some, um, what are those called? Big orange barrels, um, highly technical term um in the street to try to cut people off from going straight. Um, but they seem to kind of, I guess, move. I've heard people are like, yeah, sometimes there's kind of more out there. Sometimes today it was kind of a little bit of a shallower, a little bit more shallow. Um, and so I'm just trying to understand, like, you know, if we could move those forward because I think there was a car accident there today. Um, and so just trying to help people know that they can't go straight as much as possible. Or if we could get like a big planter, can we just put a big planter there so that they can't go forward? Because maybe the, maybe the orange barrels keep getting moved, you know, so they kind of like get over and then whatever. So I just know this because it just happened today where somebody was like, oh, yeah, there was a car, there were two cars, they, that probably was what happened. So I was just like, oh, there are these orange things there. Can we, is there anything, can we put a big planter?
I'm, I'm not certain that that would be allowable, but I, I'll, I'll talk to Bonnie about some strategies to make sure people know that they have to turn there.
I know, I know there's, I know there's flags, there's signs, there's paint. I know there's a lot of things, but just, I don't, I don't know. Um, and then the last thing I have is just um kind of just going back. So I know we're talking about these appointments and I kind of am in a sense where I feel like these most, most recently, we're going through these conversations or maybe not so much conversations. And it kind of feels like it's a, a lack of kind of, I would, I would say like trust for sure. Um, and, and maybe other things too. Um, it's interesting that the um appointment for Raven, a person who put in a very qualified application, gave much more information than the two people who are appointed previously, um, was voted down. Um, and so I went back um to look at remarks that were made from one of the appointees, John Paul Myers. Um, in particular, because this council appointed him to a commission focused on anti-discrimination and equity and things of that sort. And I feel very strongly that this council put someone into that space who has demonstrated in front of us, really, I think, a lack of understanding or a grasp of that knowledge. Um, and then we are now denying people who have demonstrated that they have a, an actual knowledge. And so because I think maybe people forgot what had happened just uh in July, the two weeks or so, um, maybe a month before we, this appointment happened, I'm just bringing these words back to this table because um I have serious concerns about what's happening and how are we making these decisions? And what is it that we're expecting is going to happen and who's going to be ready for if there is an issue? So this, this, this is directly from his public comment that he made. So this, this, this is directly from his public comment that he made. Um, low-income black and brown communities already affected by high rent prices. Um, already very low income and then to force them to live next to possible criminals, murderers, robbers. And rapists is absolutely ridiculous. Not only do I have to, hey, live with what I have. But now a murderer can live next to me. Insurance, insurance is gonna go way up. Because hey, someone might murder me. Let's take money away from, uh, black and brown communities. Just so murderers and rapists can have houses. You should all be ashamed of yourselves that you let this cross your desk without immediately saying. This is a terrible idea. I will also say that in my interactions that in, on the street. Um, that I've, I, I've experienced, um, really what. Um, I've, I've experienced what I've, I've felt in other kind of spaces when people have rate and racialized. Interactions where people cross the street to avoid crossing paths. I've experienced that now twice myself, um, right in my own neighborhood. And, um, I know I brought some of those concerns forward and my fellow council members did not take. I don't know, didn't consider them, um, but, uh, I just, I think that. This is, uh, something that we are gonna have to watch and, um. And I think we should be considering actual skill sets and not just an idea that we want a different voice. Um, to be present without considering, is that voice actually adding to the work or not adding to the work? And I think bring, bringing this, these kind of things forward, those accusations, the way that it was brought forward. Um, shows a lack of even understanding about black and brown communities, about the issue that was at hand. And, um, is, was really incendiary really for many members in our community. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. It was great to go to MML, um, and, uh, see colleagues from around the state. Um, travel with colleagues from here. Um. Two of the things that I attended there, the most notable were, um, there was a, a discussion of, or a presentation. Um, from MML, uh, a partnership, uh, project they did in partnership with the Michigan State. Um, Economic Development Department in which they have a portal for funding. Um, so this is a, a first time thing that, that pulls together all of the, uh, grants available from the state and federal sources. Um, typically those are dispersed out to the various agencies and you have to go to all of those. And so, uh, MML working with, uh, a grant from the, uh, economic development have pulled that into a portal that the, is going live. Is based on the My Water, uh, system that they had previously had. Um, and so, uh, I can forward information. I don't know if staff already has that, but I can, uh, forward that information if it's not there. Um, I thought it was really great, you know, it was, uh, kind of the first time that, that you could go into a single place and do that. They also have, uh, technical assistance. So if there's any, not just with the system and getting information out of the system. But with giving grants, understanding what the, uh, the requirements were, the eligibility and follow through afterwards. And one of the questions I asked was, you know, after you've got that, the reporting, if, if you've been awarded, then, you know, uh, requirements for reporting. And so it's kind of a wraparound around the, uh, the funding sources. So, um. And for the federal, uh, money, that is, uh, a little harder to coordinate with the federal government than with the state. They have, you know, cooperation from the state, but, um, the federal money is, is a little harder. So they'll be updating that on a regular basis. The, the information from the state is almost immediate when it becomes available, it goes in because we've got. You know, a state agency that's, that's coordinating with them. So, um, so that's going live and, and should be fairly useful to. And I have, didn't get a chance to go to. Um, it's pretty good. The other thing I attended was, uh, council manager relations. I had been, uh, trying to get that for some time. And, uh, past few meetings, there were, there were other things, um, and some of the, uh, council members, uh, had gone to that. So I chose to, to seek out other, um, sessions. But this time, um, that was great. And one of the questions that came up there was, uh, there was a conversation about evaluations and what that looked like. Um, and so we, uh, have foregone, uh, we've had some issues with that in the past, just to put it mildly. Um, and, uh, you know, we have foregone that in the short term. Because, uh, at the time that that came due, um, our city manager was holding down two positions. And then when the contract was, was up in January, um, so he had just started. So we will have to go through that. My take home from that, through that discussion was that, um. As evaluations go, there's, there's often a numerical component to that with topics that you numerically rate. Um, and, uh, people didn't really care for that, but then there's open ended questions. And looking at the system that we've had in place, uh, since Jennifer Simmons had, uh, created that document. It's a balance of those two things. And I think that is, uh, a fairly good system to, to have. It's a little of both. And then a question came up about, you know, how do you have those conversations? Um, with an employee during closed sessions or is that an open session? And, and we've always chosen to have, uh, that be at the request of the, of the employee, whether it's clerk or the city manager. It got a little hectic in there because, uh, one person said that they don't have any documentation and they just have a private conversation. And then a contract is proposed. I thought that is not, uh, I, I see lots of problems with that. Um, having experienced some of those in my, my own tenure here. So, um, just a refresher that, you know, I think we're doing a, a, a good job. The system that we have seems to be, uh, a good mix of those things. Um. We need to move forward with that when we get to a point that, you know, uh, things settle down and we can do that. Um, and, uh, I would say continue going with the, the system we have. And, you know, encourage people to be engaged. Um, I think there was, um. As a body, we, we deliberated too long on this in the past and it got delayed and that caused a lot of problems. So, um, we need to, uh, time is of the essence when we do this. So we should set a, a time to go through that. Um, I'm going through this, uh, at work now, um, in terms of setting goals and having the, the reviews at the end of this year. So, um, at some point we should, uh, we should address that as well. So, um. Um, and then my other issues are, uh. Local concerns about, um. Uh, yards that are, that are being cited. And I've already talked to Joe and Josh about that and I'll follow up.
First thing is I actually forgot to put in the Parks and Arts report, but, um, tomorrow evening, the eighteenth. Um, the city and county will be having a meeting at the senior center to talk about, um, native plantings and rain gardens and two city parks. Uh, so Candy Cane Park and Recreation Park, um, that both deal, um, with influx of, of water and oversaturation in those areas. So that's tomorrow night, starting at six o'clock at the senior center. Um, and then the second item, um, which is a follow-up on what council member Simmons said about the. The fun, if you will, intersection of Washington and Hamilton, um, that seems to be plaguing Ypsilantians and others. Um, and I've seen those traffic barrels there as well. Um, but I have also seen and I know that the triple A buses do use that to make their, their turns. So, um. So I don't, I don't know what our, our options are with putting a permanent barricade there because that does inhibit some of that traffic flow too. That's part of the, to get back to the bus station, this designed as a one-way, right? Yeah, so.
So they, it slides the, the, the columns over and then somebody has to go move them that. Oh, that's, that's why they get moved.
Potentially, but I have seen them struggle, struggled, struggled to make the term with the call. So, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a messy way to put it, I guess.
Not every time. We won't blame them for everything. I have seen it happen where the buses.
That's it.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things. First, had an opportunity to meet with, uh, two new police officers this afternoon. Um, similar to the, the last couple of times that I've had a chance to do that. I'm impressed, uh, particularly with their, their commitment to community and commitment to, to try to integrate themselves, uh, quickly into. Into our community. So that was tremendously positive. Thank you, Chief. And. Kind of a random issue here, but I was, as you know, I drive quite a bit, uh, and occasionally need to stop. And I happened to stop at the, the rest area down at, I think mile marker seven, uh, on US twenty-three. Uh, just a little over north of the border. And I thought, I wonder what, uh, travel information they have about Ypsilanti. They have just about every other community in the lower peninsula and the upper peninsula. Um, so there is only one thing. It's a nice thing. It's about Ypsilanti museums. I'll be happy to share that with everybody if you wanna see it. I didn't wanna take too many of them. So I didn't wanna take them from people that might actually use them. Um, but it did make me wonder, do we have other things? Why do we only have one item? Is there only our museums that are a reason to visit Ypsilanti? Um, of course, maybe. It's a good reason to come, but it may not be the only reason. Uh, it did call to mind, uh, an issue that. It was before, uh, I think the, uh, the county commissioners a few years back. And made me wonder if the, the merger of the, um. Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti Convention and Visitors Bureau, uh, had something to do with this. But anyway, I am never gonna want us to get short shrift. Uh, so I'm just curious to know if anybody's got any, any knowledge of. Who decides and what is produced, uh, along these lines, because I do believe Ypsilanti has more to offer than just this.
Ipsy real did it.
City manager.
So I am on the Destination Ann Arbor board, so I can bring this up at our next meeting.
Appreciate that. Um. The last, last I've mentioned, this has been stewing for me for a while, but it came to. Came to the head, uh, this week when I was disinvited from a candidate forum. Seems because I have no, uh, I have no opponent and I guess I should be happy about that. But, uh, nonetheless, I got treated like a second-class candidate. And, uh. It reminded me that I learned much to my dismay a few weeks earlier, uh, when I was candidate in the primary and the only candidate. That, uh, this council, long before I believe most, any of you were on this council. But at some point in the past, uh, it was determined that if you have no opponent in a primary, he will not appear on the ballot even. So no one has a chance to know you're there. No one has a chance to know, um, that you, you know, but they can vote for you. In fact, they cannot vote for you. Uh, but you are, you are simply declared to be the winner by acclaim, which strikes me as slightly monarchical. Um, I think we were trying to get away from that a few, few years back. And so anyway, um, I'm not looking for discussion tonight. I'm just kind of putting a marker in the ground. Uh, my understanding is this is something that's within our charter. Um, I would love for it to go away. Uh, because I think that voters should know who they're voting for and, and in effect, um, my candidacy was foisted upon them rather than, uh, them given the choice. I mean, they always have a choice to vote against somebody. I feel strongly that they're, in all seriousness, there is a, a act of, a compact between. Uh, the voters and the elected officials and, um, you know, you should have to earn, you should have to earn the voter's trust. So I think that's all I'll say for, for right now, but at some point, um, would love for us to perhaps talk about that or revisit that provision in our charter.
It's really interesting. You know, I've never not had an opponent, so I didn't even know that. Council number Tuesday.
All right. So being, being that it's only Tuesday, it's been a pretty busy week. So yesterday I had the chance to, um, attend the swearing-in of our two new YPD officers. Um, Officer Seleski and Officer Plymail, if I'm saying their name right, I hope I am.
Yeah.
Um, yesterday I got to initially meet them and today I got the chance to, um, meet them and actually dig deeper into. Who they are, why they chose to come to, um, YPD and what they hope to offer and what they hope to. Get from working in YPD and having those conversations with these two individuals. Um, it was great. Um, one individual. Is traveling quite some time to come be with us here in Ipsy and another is traveling a short distance, but they both have. They both have a lot of, uh, it seems like a lot of intelligence and a lot of excitement to work for, um, our organization here in Ypsilanti. And they also both noted that, um, one of the defining factors for them coming, choosing to come to YPD was our. Chief Moore. Um, so I wanna give a big shout out to, um, Chief Moore, um, for welcoming in new officers time and time again. Um, lastly, I would, uh, like to inform everybody that, let me get back to it. Every Monday, and it, it started on September the ninth, um, at Park Ridge Community Center, there's a Monday night basketball. So from five thirty to seven thirty PM. So, um, middle school and high school kids can come right after school to Park Ridge Community Center and play basketball. But it's not just solely basketball. Basketball is to draw in. Um, you also have the, these students also have the opportunity to get free. Um, tutoring or homework help from the LEAP program. And LEAP program stands for Learning Empowerment and Achievement Program. Um, and that's every Monday night from five thirty to seven thirty PM. Um, lots of programming there. Actually, yesterday when I went, I seen the, the good brother Mike Tubbs out there, um, coaching a, coaching a young guy, um, in basketball. And essentially just life. So it's a, it's a good program. It's gonna be going until December ninth. If any, um, middle school or high school kids are out there and need help with homework or wanna just have a outlet to vent whatever emotions or feelings or thoughts they're having. Come on down to Park Ridge Park, five thirty to seven thirty PM every Monday night. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, for me, okay. So, um, yeah. Had the opportunity to attend the MML convention, um, last week. It was really a, a great experience. Number one, being able to spend time with colleagues. But also, um, two things really stuck out to me this year at the convention. One of them just being that I saw a lot of different faces actually that I had not seen in the past. It seems like there's been, um, a lot more folks across the state who are getting involved and really wanting to come and engage with, you know, other. Local electeds across the state. And I had some really interesting conversations from communities that I had never, I feel like had a chance to sit across from and kind of talk about what their experiences have been. Um, over the last few years. And particularly we had some good ones about what happened during the pandemic. So I'm still processing some of that. Um, yeah. Um, the other piece, and I think that it connects back to, um, council member Simmons already brought this up. But, um, two of the sessions that I, that I attended, while they weren't necessarily exciting, they were very informative and they were about. Um, active shooters and about, um, communities that have had those experiences in Michigan. And one mayor in particular, um, during our mayor's luncheon, shared, um, our recent experience they had last year and kind of, uh. Information around like, you know, we were not prepared. This is what we learned. And we wanna share that with you so that, you know, you, um, are able to be prepared as a community and not have to experience this in the same way that we did. And, um, you know, it's not lost on me that the morning, um, on Friday morning, I was in the last session. Um, that was open to all of MML. We got to choose the, uh, the breakouts and then to get back to Ypsilanti in the afternoon. And be brought up to speed on what occurred in, in the city and over at, um, Wise. And that same day, it was very, uh, you know, it was an intense feeling to think about the fact that that could have been a possibility for us in our community. Um, after sitting through a session on that in the morning and, and planning and things that I had not thought about, um, for the city of Ypsilanti. And for just our surrounding municipalities to, to be privy to what our emergency management plans are, what, what my role, what council's role would be. Um, in a situation like that. Um, I know that forthcoming, we have an official communication from the chief and our surrounding jurisdictions. Who participated in the event over at the elementary school. And so I won't go too far into that. But I will say that responses that, um, we've received, in addition to questions, I've also received more than one email. Um, and just feedback about, um, folks' satisfaction with the response, albeit a really difficult, uh, situation. And clearly, you know, lasting for, for our children and for the parents and for the educators, um, and just for the community, honestly, that. Proximate but throughout Ipsy, um, but feeling like, you know, without knowing what the process should be. Folks sure did respond, um, and. Folks sure did respond, and so I look forward to us having some more conversation about that, reading the official correspondence that's coming out from our our leaders. On what occurred and also what is our official process, but also I have some, you know. Ideas based on what I, the two sessions I attended up at MML around things that we have not, I have never experienced, that we have not done as a body, to my knowledge. That we we should be doing. It's unfortunate that we have to prepare for those things, but it's a reality. And, you know, it's not something that I like or that I want us to talk about, but. It's a, it's an unfortunate reality, and also plan to just be doing as much as I can to. Support legislation that supports our communities and, you know, gunless, smart and effective gun legislation because. It's just an issue. It's just an issue, and it's really, really concerning that we have to prepare. For for these type of situations in that way. But I do want to thank, you know, Chief Moore, I got up to date information in real time of what was occurring. And our department and our surrounding, you know, organizations that came in to to support. I also had the opportunity to attend the swearing in and also meet with our new officers, and what I, what I will say is that I really do. Just enjoy being able to ask questions and then be available to them for for questions as they're joining our organization. And to really set and level set expectation for what we look for in this community, what is acceptable and what is not. And I I look forward to, you know, them being successful under, you know, great leadership over at YBD and with our city manager. I had some other things, but I'll move on.
I'll go quick since the the meeting is about to end. So WARMa is going to be doing another RFP for trash services. They do want to get buy-in from the member jurisdictions prior to the RFP. Last time they released an RFP, none of the, none of the membership wanted to. You know, accept that bid, so they will be looking for jurisdictions to opt in after reviewing the RFP. And looking at it and just making a commitment that we would go with with the. The 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 bid award. There is a five percent kind of a. Excuse me, kind of pullback if if. Our cost for trash removal services increased by five percent, we had the ability to. Remove ourselves from that RFP. But one thing that. Has been discussed by our current waste hauler as well as WARMa is. We, pretty much all of waste haulers are moving to the cart because you can do it with fewer employees. It's just an arm, so. We can assume that there will be carts for. Trash as well as recycling moving forward. What that necessarily looks like, we don't know yet. I'm not sure if they have to be the ninety-six gallon or if we can go with smaller ones. But we will find that out and coming in the future. The ride is going to be doing some testing over at the Transit Center. They're. Going to be doing some borings to look for archaeological surveys, soil samples and topographic surveys. So if anyone asks you what's going on there, that is what is happening. There's going to be a need for emergency repairs for Prospect Bridge. And we, we want to get this done before we start having to put down salt. That should be coming at the next meeting, October first. And then if need be, and we have to do a supplemental allocation, that would be on the sixteenth. Little Forge and Factory Bridges went through their punch list today, so they're almost closed out. I also attended the MML conference, which I really enjoyed, you know, having time just to to speak with the council members. One thing that I kind of got excited about is I went to the AI. Breakout session, and I think with our staffing levels, we already use AI to some degree here. But I think moving forward, it will be excellent for collecting data and to really understand what that data means. More quickly and it will hopefully kind of mitigate our our staffing shortages. And then lastly. The DPW stabilization went out to bid, as I mentioned earlier, as well as staff reviewing the Phase Two environmental study. So once we have more information on that, we will, we will share with council, and that is it for me.
Thank you. I also want to add it with the AI really quick, that I think it would be really great for us to use on our website around the questions, like when folks are asked questions about ordinances and things like that. That we could load all that information in and utilize that to have people be able to get information faster and easier. That came up for me when I attended the the session. Yes, yes.
Here, under a little bit of a review with our website, so maybe something that we may be.
Awesome, thank you. Mayor Porton, you have them.
I've moved to extend the meeting to ten fifteen. We have people in the audience that there is. Yet to have a second.
All in favor of extending? Any opposed?
I do, I just have something quick because I didn't even mention MML. I did also attend the council and city manager. Session, and what I really enjoyed about that was the overall consensus was we are stronger together, just like YCS. And I really appreciate them just saying that, and that's why here at council meetings, I have pushed for team building. And I know that is something in our charter. I don't know if it's kind of late for us to do it, or we should wait until November. You know, when the new council person comes, but I just really. Enjoyed the conversation around being stronger together, because I know as a team, we function better when we are. On the same level to a certain extent.
All right, this is our second opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who would like Pastor Jackson, please come up. You'll have three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening, Reverend Daniel Jackson, and I. One, I just wanted to say that I was really grateful for you wavering the fee for the event that we did. For community violence intervention. We were able to, we had a target group of people that we wanted to engage and. Implement these values and virtues that the epidemiologists shared with us of fostering healthy, meaningful relationships. Having at least one healthy person in your life. The other one is a positive self-identity, self-image, and the third one is to be part of something greater than yourself, and we were absolutely successful at that. And it was a great event for what we were going after, targeting the people that we were wanting to reach out to. Also, I just wanted to say as well, just, I, there was a. A meeting that we had with Barr, Mr. Barr, in regards to the. Human Relations Commission. And one of the things that for me came up as a point of concern or question was the conflict of interest because. I lead a nonprofit and I'm a pastor as well, and so. I was trying to figure out how to navigate, how to continue that meaningful work. And working with our community members and different organizations. As we're forming greater and greater collaborations and financial support for the work that we're doing. And I didn't want my role in the HRC to be. To hinder that work, and I was, and so. I just had questions. I'll probably try to follow up with Mr. Barr as well to make sure that. Everything's above, above reproach. I just wanted to put that out there because. There were some things that he shared that were really insightful, that I wanted to make sure that I stayed within those boundaries. Having a nonprofit as well, and soliciting resources to fund the meaningful work we're doing in community violence intervention through Love Washington. So once again, thank you for the opportunity to share. Tonight, and again, all the hard work that each and every one of you are doing. We are absolutely praying for you guys. Our church and and the different community members that join us in this, and you guys are. You guys are caring for our community in really powerful and meaningful ways, so thank you again for the opportunity to serve and to partner. In the ways that we've been able to work together so far. Thirteen seconds, perfect.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to just counsel? Please come behind. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Doron Weatherstone, senior. I'd like to apologize for my tiredness. I just left the event for Miss Duckworth with the civic duty. Of voting education. The last time I came here for the first time, talking to y'all, I kind of, it was my first time. I didn't know which direction I was going, so I just kind of rode with the punches and took y'all insight. But now I'm just stepping in front of y'all today to like, kind of just put y'all to breast to. What my brand PPE and the Love Washington Organization has going on in the upcoming future. We are trying to implement something called the Pop Out Events. With the intentions to provide public platforms of productivity and positivity. By promoting peaceful community engagement through our Ora, ORA, outreach, rescue and awareness. The outreach will be like more of a. Prayer-based, people-based things with the community needs in general. The rescue will be a collaboration with Andrew and I, Ice Force of our city. We're going to try to go take care of that. We got. He's going to give me the list of the top ten so far. We're going to work with that first. And the next thing will be awareness, where we're trying to engage on. The concerns of you guys and the guys of the community and bring awareness as a group. My intention for involving myself in this, so I can be a pivotal position in. And restructuring and rejuvenating, restoring the communal interactions and trust between. Our city officials and the people of this community to combat the recidivism rate, the drug usage rate and the crime rate overall. I would like for you guys from some points of context that I can reach for you guys, so I can try to. Figure out what I need to do more in all aspects of that meaning. So outside of that, I don't have anything, anything to say with that. But so y'all can get with me about that, and we got a few events coming up, so I'd like to like get some insight from you guys. And I would also like to point some contacts because the people around in McArthur area told me to ask you guys about like the one lane roads that kind of got the lighting over there between like. The Forge, Clark, Getty's area. I don't know who I need to talk to to get with with that. And also like since the post pandemic, they say like we have a lot of bathrooms and nowhere to go, so they don't want to like leave their house or come to our events because. If it's more than an hour or so, they gotta go take their kids back home to go use the bathroom, so. Find somebody to talk to about that. Other than that, we can just start with baby steps.
Thank you. So I'm sure for some of us, we can share our information with you, but also you can always find our info on the city website. Everybody's email and phone number is listed there with our role. Our term, everything is on there, but I'm sure we, you know, folks will share info with you.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address council? All right, we'll see. Oh, we'll be up on Zoom.
We have one person on Zoom, Alexander Monroe.
All right, thank you. Good evening.
Yeah, hello, can you hear me? Yeah, hey, this is Alexander Monroe. I'm the owner of Monroe Real Estate, just up the block here on North Huron. I want to do express support for the work you guys, y'all are doing with Washington All Love. I hadn't heard of this organization until listening to city council meetings. I do think that the right way to help with recidivism rates and lowering drug use rates is through bringing people in and integrating people and. And what turns outreach like what y'all are working on, so I really support that. Additionally, I wanted to push back on some commentary here from Councilwoman Simmons. First of all, pedestrian sidewalks are public spaces intended for everyone's use and no individual, including Councilwoman Simmons, has the authority to dictate how or why people cross the street. Councilwoman Simmons has implied that people cross the street to avoid her personally, which is not her prerogative, nor does she own the sidewalk. Additionally, she has been observed riding her bicycle through the central business district on our sidewalks. It's a violation of City Code, Section R two eight, one six oh three, Rule six oh three A. Which prohibits bicycles on sidewalks in business districts. So we have someone saying who should be crossing streets while they're literally violating city code. Additionally, Commissioner Myers, speaking as a concerned citizen about public safety should be welcomed, not obstructed in his participation by Councilwoman Simmons. His input is valuable to our community. The Human Relations Commission has not only failed to publicly disclose the references it deliberates upon. But has also had specific members ridicule concerned citizens by accusing them of, quote, "spreading misinformation," unquote. While simultaneously restricting public access to transparent information. I've provided a copy of the reference to Councilman McLean, but the commission still has not made the information available to the broader public. If transparency is not provided, what recourse do members of the public have? Litigation? The statute should be amended to include the HRC under the Open Meetings Act to ensure transparency. And prevent the marginalization of concerned members of the public. Councilmember Simmons challenged a valid proposal I signed during her recall election, yet I was never given the chance to verify my signature. This, despite the recall proceeding, regardless of my signature being excluded. Her actions appear to show a pattern of anti-democratic behavior, especially against those not aligned with her personal group of activists. The community deserves transparency, accountability and adherence to both city codes and democratic principles from all council members. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on Zoom?
No, anyone else, raise your hand if you'd like to speak on Zoom. All good.
All right, seeing none, the meeting is adjourned.
Yes, I got you.